Is now in session, please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly spirit, as we gather here tonight, gather us in our decisions that affect our community, give us the wisdom to handle the city's business. Bless everyone present tonight, allow all to have good health and happiness in their daily lives. Continue to watch over the people of the Ukraine in their fight for freedom and the Americans being held by foreign powers. Give us the power to help remove the extremism that exists in our community and country, and allow all to work together in solving our issues. Give comfort to all that have been affected with the gun violence across our country. We ask for all of this in your holy name, and let us all say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal justice.
I'd like to note that Councilman Williams will not be attending this evening, and he has been excused. In addition, it is my understanding that Councilman Fawcett has requested to participate electronically. If that is at the pleasure of council, a motion would be in order. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Remove Councilmember Roger Fawcett be approved to participate electronically in today's city council meeting because he is unable to be present because of medical conditions.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Bennett to allow Councilman Fawcett to participate virtually. Do I have a second? Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of six to zero.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of August 3, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-37. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meetings, closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council, a motion would be in order. Councilman Goldberg?
So moved, Mayor.
Motion for approval for Councilman Goldberg, Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Next item is consideration or approval of the minutes from the February 2, 2022 work session and regular meeting, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval, Councilman Johnson, Vice Mayor Bennett.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Bennett, do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We have no special presentations this evening. At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of city council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. If there are any items that members of council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And just to clarify, Mayor, that's to adopt the entire agenda?
And adopt the entire agenda. Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Goldberg?
Second.
A second from Councilman Goldberg, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any agenda speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Dooman.
We'll now move to presentation of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please present items for consideration.
Item number seven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Aviation for the Suffolk Executive Airport. Item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for the Fifth Judicial District Community Corrections Program. Item number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate additional funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation Urban Maintenance Program for public roadway maintenance.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Okay, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, item seven, the city has received $3,500 from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Aviation in support of the Suffolk Executive Airport for FY 2223. Funding will be used for the FAA's triannual inspections of the Automated Weather Observation System. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the aviation's facilities fund budget by $3,500. A local match of $184.22 is required and is appropriated in the FY 23 aviation facilities fund budget. Item eight, the city has received $236,542 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and $43,588 from the City of Franklin and the counties of Isle of Wight and South Hampton each in support of the Fifth Judicial District Community Corrections Program. The funding will be used for the operating expenses of the community corrections program. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grants Fund budget by $310,000, local support of $125,659 was appropriated in the FY 23 Consolidated Grants Fund budget. In item nine, the city has received $2,259,687.36 from the Virginia Department of Transportation Urban Maintenance Program in support of the city's public roadway maintenance. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the roadway maintenance fund budget by $2,259,687.35, 36 cents, excuse me, and no local match is required.
If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Goldberg?
So moved, Mayor.
Motion for approval, Councilman Goldberg, Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson, is there any discussion of the motion? Councilman Fawcett, you okay?
Fine, Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, we're now going to move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a shooting range outdoor on property located at 1255 and 1444 Hosea Road, zoning map 44 parcels 126 and 127, and zoning map 45 parcel 21, account number 050924184, 05007100, and 052088000. This is CUP 202202. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Kevin Wine will provide the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This public hearing and the one that will come after it are companion items, so for the sake of brevity on staff's part, I'm going to handle both of them together. They are separate applications, will certainly require a separate vote, but from my standpoint, I'm going to combine the presentation to talk about the shooting range and the school as a part of my comments. So, as I noted, these are companion requests, that CUP 2022002 and 2022014, they're affiliated and CUP 2022, the one where the caption was just read, is for a shooting range, and CUP 2022014 is for a private school that will be associated with said shooting range. There are separate use permits due to the fact that the shooting range is proposed on three parcels, while the, and then those are on, two on the eastern side of Hosea Road and one on the western side of Hosea Road, two of which are zoned A, agricultural zoning district, and those are the parcels that are on the eastern side of Hosea Road. On the western side of Hosea Road, you have one parcel, and that is zoned M2, heavy industrial district. So, the shooting range will be located on all of these parcels, all three parcels. The school will be isolated and only permitted on the two agriculturally zoned parcels because a school is only permitted with a use permit in the agricultural zone as opposed to being permitted at all in the M2 zone. So that's why there are two separate applications, or we would have handled them as one. These properties are located outside of the central growth area and designated Rural Agricultural Use District in the 2035 comprehensive plan. As stated, the request for the shooting range involves all three parcels, as noted here. You can see the ag district on the eastern side of Hosea Road, and on the western side you can see the M2 heavy industrial zoning district. The applicant is proposing multiple shooting ranges that will be available for federal, state, and local government personnel as well as the general public that join by paying dues. Three shooting ranges are proposed, an 800-yard range, a 200-yard range, and a 50-yard range that would be designed to accommodate 12 members at one time. Retail sales of firearms and ammunition are also proposed within one of the existing structures that is presently located at 1444 Hosea Road. This would serve as an accessory use to the shooting ranges. The applicant, the application narrative states that guests will be required to check in and park at 1444 Hosea Road. When guests desire to visit the other shooting ranges across Hosea Road, they will be transported via bus and escorted by a staff member of the shooting range. The proposed hours of operation for the shooting ranges are generally from dawn until dusk. They're not proposed to be utilized between dusk and dawn. Staff is recommending certain hours of restriction as it relates to the discharge of firearms. The applicant does propose safety and security measures for the shooting ranges that was discussed in staff's report, but involves birmingham of 20 feet as well as 11 foot in depth. Here you can see the existing shooting ranges featuring covered shooting areas and their safety bairms we discussed. Here's the exhibit for the proposed uses, which is recommended as a condition of approval for the proposed use. You can see two 50-yard pistol ranges, a 200-yard rifle range, and an 800-yard rifle range on the western parcel, that's the M2 zone piece, and sporting clay areas, a pistol range, and a variety of office building space comprising training rooms on the eastern parcels. My apologies for the poor quality of this, this is a scanned document of, however, the engineers working on this proposal were asked to provide staff with noise level readings as it relates to the shooting activity. And here you can see those noise readings were taken at a variety of points on the property, both on and off-site, where it was observed that certain discharge of a variety of caliber rounds resulted in noise that was comparable to the ambient noise readings observed in those same areas. So as it relates to the first CUP, this is CUP 2022002, the shooting range, staff has evaluated it for compliance with the established criteria outlined in the UDO for conditional uses, and we've determined it can operate in conformance with the criteria specifically with staff's recommended conditions. And I, at this point, I'm going to go into the next staff report, but it's important to note specifically on the shooting range, there is a condition as it relates to the hours of operation, particularly the discharge of firearms on Sundays. There was an inadvertent typo that stated that it can be 10:00 PM to dusk on Sundays, that should be 10:00 AM to dusk on Sundays. So you'll have to incorporate that into your motion if you elect to move forward with it. The Planning Commission at their meeting on July 19, 2022, voted seven to one to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with the conditions. Moving along, I'll discuss the separate CUP for the private school and outline what that request entails. But here are the two parcels, as previously discussed, that are on the eastern side of Hosea Road, Zoned A, that's the ag district. And once again, you can see the same exhibit that outlines where certain activities will be taking place on the property. That would be a condition of its approval. So the purpose of the CUP, which is CUP 2022014, is to establish a private school in order to provide education, training, as well as tactical and non-tactical instruction for the same folks that will patron the use, shooting ranges capabilities. So, all guests must pay dues in order to become members of the facility, and there are three meeting rooms with existing office buildings located at 1444 Hosea Road that would be used for training and education for up to 75 members. As previously discussed, like the shooting range, all patrons will be required to check in at 1444 Hosea Road prior to entering the facility, and shall they need to cross the street, they will check in with staff to do that safely. The proposed hours of operation for the private school would generally be Monday through Saturday from dawn to dusk, and Sunday from 10:00 AM to dusk. The private school does propose some outdoor primitive camping training outdoors, and this particular activity would not cause any specific noise impacts that concern staff considering this is a assemblage of 300 acres. Discharging of firearms would not be permitted outside the hours outlined in the conditional use permit conditions. Here we have some of the photos that illustrate what the facilities on site currently look like. As noted, these exist, this is where most of the training activities will be conducted. So as with the shooting range operation, staffs evaluated the proposal in accordance with the criteria established for conditional uses throughout the city, and has concluded the use can operate harmoniously with, when accompanied with staff's recommended conditions as outlined in staff's report. So, this did come from the Planning Commission on July 19, and they voted seven to one to recommend a resolution recommending approval of this application with conditions. So as noted, that concludes my report, but as noted, as it relates to the shooting range use, we'll need to pay particular attention to the condition that, that sets hours of operation standards for the discharge of firearms, Sunday, it should be 10:00 AM to dusk. That concludes my report, I'll be happy to address any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five-minute period for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing, will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address as to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Mayor Dooman?
Mayor Doeman, City Council members, Mr. Moore, Chief Chandler, good evening. I'm Todd Butler. I'm here to speak on behalf of the fourteen forty-four Hosea Road CUP and the twelve fifty-five. I'd like to explain a little bit about the facility as it sits now. We've been there twenty-two years. We've operated as a private slash personal training facility for shooting birds, for shooting rifles, invited guests only. Never has anyone ever paid a penny to visit this facility. What we're asking to do is we're asking to open this up to the public, to have the public, the law enforcement side of it, some of the state agencies come and be involved in it, to have a facility here that's secure and safe within the boundaries of the city of Suffolk. I know everyone's tired of traveling to Norfolk, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach to shoot. So we have a facility right here in Suffolk that can accommodate that. We have measures in place. We have an impeccable safety record. We've never had one complaint by the city, by the community or anything in twenty-two years as there have been one complaint. We have twenty-four-hour surveillance cameras throughout the perimeter. We have fifty cameras inside the interior. There's nothing that goes on on this property that we truly don't know about, very, very seldom or very rare. We've just issued our two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three permit from the state to be able to operate as the conditions are right now. Like I said, we're deviating from what we've been doing for twenty-two years and allowing, hopefully, the community and the, and the local law enforcements and state groups to come in and train and learn some, learn some, some guidance from some of our, from some of our people. Again, our burns are set up as, as we were spoken about, for twenty-foot tall by eleven-foot wide. We have a contained safety area where you never see any blue light when you're shooting. Everything's contained, all the bullets are recognized within that range you're in. So there's hardly any types of opportunity for bullets to escape. If it is, it's from a adjoining farm, a hunt club, or something like that. We offer a secure environment for the community. We've worked with the local Skeeter Town Civic League. We met with Mr. Randy Skeeter, and we worked out some ideas of what are their needs and what are our needs. Mr. Skeeter had mentioned that there's never been a problem one with, with us up there for twenty-two years. The concerns that they have is that the community is shooting in their yards, they're shooting in their, in their, in the woods close to the, close to their houses, and they were worried about stray bullets. You know, I was told the other day at a civic meeting with them that one of the, one of the Civic League members had a bullet come through their window and hit their headboard. Those items like that is uncontrollable. You shouldn't have that. So what we offer was, we offer Skeeter Town Civic League, get your group together, whoever's an active shooter or whoever likes to shoot, and come up there. We will, we will offer you a reduced rate. We don't know what that rate is right yet. We've mentioned somewhere between ten dollars and twenty-five dollars, which is way below the price. But again, it's recognized as how many people want to participate in this program and how many, how often they want to shoot. So we're in, we're still in negotiations with that. I sent Mr. Skeeter a email the other day, a text, as hopefully get with the Civic League meetings in the next couple of months, recognize that number of what it is and so we can move forward. So we're working on that right now. You know, the Suffolk Police and the Suffolk Sheriff's Department, they have to travel and go train, and we have something in their backyard that they can, they can come and train right here. They've got to go to Walters, they've got to go Virginia Beach, Chesapeake. This is in their backyard. This is going to save taxpayers money for not having to travel, taking away from the shortage of the manpower, you know, that the police has right now. The amount of manpower recognized to go train is nailed. I mean, they don't have really time to do that. So we're offering something close, something right there in their backyard that they have opportunities to come to train right here, at a convenience. So the reason for the school part of the CUP is we have a program set up for the house of worship situational awareness programs to where there's a lot of threats and a lot of bad things going on in the world right now. We've already met with a couple of churches, and what we're trying to do is set up a situational awareness. So we need facilities so all these pastors, these preachers, these ministers can come and train in our facilities and make you aware of what's happening in the world today. So the last meetings we've done because of trying to keep traffic off of the property, we've done it at the, at the local churches. So we'd like to bring all those, all those pastors and individuals to the, the range to be able to train that in a controlled environment. We have a five-stand sporting clays course, which is second to none, is world-class. There's nothing in this area like it, and that's open to the public to come up and shoot sporting clays right here in Suffolk. And that's a whole separate membership of a different type of individual wants to come shoot. It's a corporate-type draw. It brings in different companies throughout the world to do team buildings with us, to bond with sporting clays and miscellaneous things. So we've recognized that as being a huge success for the city of Suffolk. We hold one of the largest pheasant shoots for the last twenty years in the country. We have anywhere between a thousand and three thousand people that show up for this. This, this year we had a bad snowstorm the day before, so we went to a state of emergency. But, you know, we invited Chief Chandler's group to come up and, and actually work. They, they set a system up for all the new, all the new governors and lieutenant governors, et cetera, which couldn't come. But they made a presence of what it's like to be in an area with six hundred people with guns at the same time shooting birds. And it was a training scenario that no other city had, but Suffolk stepped to the plate and, and they had some serious training there. That, that was a good thing for those guys. Like I said, I've met with the Civic League for four occasions. We worked out our, our differences of how we can support each other. Mr. Skeeter spoke in favor for it. I know we've had a couple of complaints about the hunting and the wildlife. You know, we keep half that farm still as, as operational. We're still growing crops. We're still, we're still hunting over top of fields. There's no one that knows any more about these woods than us. We're in them six days a week. You know, we're, we're watching the wildlife. In the twenty-two years, it, to be honest with you, it's increased. They're, they're not leaving the facility. They're coming in, they're eating out of our bird feeders. We know what's there, so it hasn't affected the wildlife. But what we're offering is a secured environment for the communities, for the law enforcements, for the state. You know, the state is really interested in using this, this property, and I think there's some people here tonight to speak on that. But, you know, having something like this, I think you could pick it up and take it to any city you wanted, but this is, this is the place for it. You know, we've been here for all these years. We're ready to give back and help, help the community out, and, you know, we're, we're just, we're prepared to move forward to what supports everyone here. So if you have any further questions for me, I'll, I'll let Mr. Oliver speak.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next speaker to speak in favor, we've got three minutes and a bit.
Mayor Doeman, Council members, thank you for having me. My name is Alex Oliver, and I'm here to speak on the CUP for fourteen forty-four Hosea I spent twenty-one years in the Navy SEAL teams. So when it comes to weapon safety, weapons handling, I put myself right out there at the top of one of the best in the world. The teammates that I have that are coming on board to help out with this project out here are all the same. These are the caliber of folks that we're bringing in to be the instructors for this shooting range. You will have the top-notch best guys in the world at doing this. We train everybody across the country, in the world for that matter, when it comes to weapons handling, weapon safety. Law enforcement agencies from different states request us to come out there and train their officers. My dad himself was a police officer for forty years. Other government agencies, we've been handling their training when it comes to shooting ranges, shooting weapons handling, and safety as well. Outside of those things I look at, as Mr. Butler mentioned, about safety in the country in these communities when it comes to schools, city buildings, malls, grocery stores, the experience level that we'll be able to train people with to handle situations like that, you just don't find it anywhere. People request us to come out and come to their states and give this kind of training. And things that we do is we assess the capabilities of the different law enforcement agencies, whoever they may be, and then we curtail a special program designed around what their standard operating procedures are, their safety and training habits, and we just enhance them. We make them better. We're not trying to change the way they do business, we're just trying to enhance on what they do. As Mr. Butler mentioned, we went and spoke with Minister Skeeter and talked with him about this, and he was very open to hearing what myself and another former teammate of mine had to say, the things that we could do. Sometimes it's not just about weapons training, but it's understanding what to do when weapons do come out. And he was excited about the potential to see what we could do for him and his, his parish. At the end of the day, all we hope to do is create a safe environment for our kids, our places of worship, our community, and the state of Virginia. We have an opportunity to make that happen, and I assure you, safety is at the forefront of everything, but what we also want to do is create a place that's fun, but first and foremost, safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That virtually concludes our time for the opponents at this time. Proponents, excuse me, proponents. We'll now move to fifteen minutes worth of time for the opposition.
Do you have any time left? Do you have time left? Would you move? Do you have five minutes for rebuttal?
Yeah, we will have, we will have a five-minute rebuttal period, so we can use it then. But that, yeah, time for the proponents has expired. We'll now move, we've got fifteen minutes for opponents. Do we have anyone to speak in opposition?
My name is Jonathan Powell, eleven eighteen Hosea Road. I stand in opposition of the shooting range, not fully, but in opposition in the way that is being presented. Whoever the first speaker was did not identify himself or provide his address, so I must only address him as the first speaker. The first speaker did not, in my opinion, tell full accurate statements of no issues at eleven, at one four 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 Hosea Road. Let me enlighten you, being that you said in the twenty-two years that there have been no issues. On January first, there was a three-alarm fire in twenty, in two thousand and two. On April seventh, twenty twenty-two, there was a police issue that happened at that same venue. So those are two examples of the things that have happened at one four 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 Hosea Road. Because I live there, I'm the one that has to hear the rapid fire of AR-15s. I'm the one that has to hear three oh threes being shot, two oh sevens. I'm the one that has to hear those noises from my house. Y'all don't live nowhere near this range. I do understand and I do support the need of a range here on this side of the water. That part I have no problem with, but I want truth and transparency and presentation. So my questions for these, the first speaker, since he said he spoke to Randy Skeeter, Randy Skeeter is not the only one that lives in the Skeeter Town Civic League or in the Cypress Borough. My questions are, is there an abatement plan for the ammunition lead and the GSR? Or is there a disposal plan for the bullet casings or the projectiles? Or is there a recycling plan for this within these twenty-foot-high, eleven-foot-wide burns? Is there a mitigation plan on the annual need to remove the lead, the copper, the, the zinc, the aluminum, all known carcinogenics in this area? What is the impact of the GSR to the environment for this two-hundred-foot, eight-hundred, two-hundred yard and eight-hundred-yard outdoor range or this fifty-yard pistol range? Number three, is this the same way that Blackwater started? Yes, it is. I attended the Virginia Beach City Council meetings when Blackwater started in, in Virginia Beach and Concord, North Carolina, with a large tract of land, and they said they were going to have a school, a tactical and a non-tactical training area to the federal, the state, and the local municipal personnel. Now, after all of this, you want to add the general public and their guests to tactical training? Hmm. I worked it damn near. I'm familiar with the range, and I understand the one-point-seven million dollars it took to abate the lead and remove it and restore the environment to a non-threatening level. Is this school going to offer food and beverages? So I ask, can we also fill all of the elements of the three letters ATF of alcohol, tobacco, and firearms? Are some of the guests or members going to be much like Nicholas Slaton, Paul Alvin Slock, Dustin Laurent Hurd, or even Evan Shawn Liberty? You know, the patriots that killed fourteen Iraqis and wounded seventeen more in the Seoul Square in two thousand and seven? Maybe not, because they were pardoned by President Trump on December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Here it is. Like I said, I stand in opposition. What is the cleanup and exit plan or reclamation plan for fourteen forty-four or twelve fifty-five Hosea Road should the operators shut down or change ownership? The conditional use permit, if approved, should only be issued to the present owners only and be revoked if the land or the business is sold. Who would be responsible for the cleanup? For we don't need another Dixie Guano, whereas the former Suffolk landfill became a superfund site. Have these things been considered by our city council? Oh, by the way, that same superfund site is adjacent to where these shooting ranges are to be. I believe the ownership and requesters will no longer have Suffolk police officers on the twenty-four-hour duty guard at the interest like they did from January first, two thousand and twenty-two, until April sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, saying that this is private property and what goes on beyond the gate, we don't have to answer, even though the first presenter said it's all open to the public. How about the forty tandem axle dump trucks that have been going down Hosea Road every day since January twenty-third, carrying aggregate and dirt, especially after the May tenth fatal accident between two dump trucks and a pickup truck, where the driver of the pickup truck was killed? Those are the questions I ask. I wonder if this tactical school is the frame, is the training ground for the next mass shooter? Or if this is the ownership group, or if this ownership group is willing to take responsibility if one of their students comes to the Suffolk City Hall and does the same thing as they did two years ago in Virginia Beach? I press you, Mayor, I press you, Mayor Michael Doeman, to vote for Suffolk becoming a sanctuary city after this new conditional use permit may or may not be approval. If it's approved, fine, but I ask that you take thirty or sixty more days to do a little more homework. Council, you haven't acted on the flooding issue on Main Street, which changes our response time for Kimberly Bridge. We have to go three-point-nine miles out of the way to go to Oversea Hospital. You haven't addressed the access issue to the Nazman River for over three years, but you're ready in less than thirty days to approve a shooting range that may have federal fines due to the violation of the National Environment Policy Act, the Fish and Wildlife Act, the Federal Water Pollution Control Act, Section two eight, four oh two, or four oh four. You might even violate public law ninety-two, four seventy-eight, or ninety-three, four oh two. Y'all all look baffled because you have no idea what they are. But I, let me inform you, just thirty or sixty more days to find out if the actions that y'all take or vote in favor of this shooting range without this additional knowledge, there is a one-hundred-thousand-dollar federal fine for the impact that it can have on the dismal swamp to which we dwell. That is my closure. I ask you, Council, please delay this vote at least thirty to sixty days to follow up on these additional issues. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else present to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Mayor Doeman. My name is William Hunter, and I live on the White Marsh Road. My land joins Todd Butler's land. And Councilman, hello. I want to be a, a good neighbor to my neighbor behind me. I have, have, I have some questions about some of the things going on about the hunting, about, about the shooting. When the Planning Commission met the first time, I asked, why not make the residents on the White Marsh Road aware of all this shooting? I was invited to see the operation, but I, my trip to it was canceled, so I never did see it. I worry about stray bullets, if there is such a thing. I haven't seen if they have a, or if Todd, he's told me about things that have a way to capture the bullets and make sure that none doesn't fly away. I know one neighbor right at the end of the White Marsh Road has had three bullets in his roof in the last five or six years, and had, and finds out when the roof starts leaking. But that's close to town. That's not out in the country. I'm sure it's going to affect the hunting that I have on a lot of my property that I have, there's three hundred and seventy-some acres. I raise cattle. I'm probably the- I'm probably the largest cattle producer in Suffolk. I worry about stray bullets coming over there and hitting a, uh, a bull, just paid $3,500 for him. Hope none of that happens. I hope none of that happens. Um, I, y'all helped me a few years ago get my solar farm going. The solar farm people wanting to know, is insurance in place in case a bullet hits a panel? And I also question, is insurance in place if a stray bullet hits, uh, somebody's house? It hits a $150,000 tractor sitting in the yard because I'm right adjacent across, you know, the woods from them? That's the question I wanted to find out. And, uh, are we, I, I don't know if this is a proper thing to ask or not, but are we gonna be flying people into the Suffolk Airport to come in and shoot? That's something I wasn't, hadn't asked, wanted to ask the question about that. But, uh, I know Todd spent a pile of money back there getting ready. I am 100% in support of helping the local community, uh, our first responders. I just worry about hearing shooting from day dawn to dusk every day. I know about his feather hunt every year. I think he's great. I know when they shoot 5,000, 6,000 rounds over there that day I heard, but I think this, I think from what I understand, I haven't seen it, something about some of it being muffled where the sound don't go as bad. But I was invited, but then I was canceled. Thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome. We have our next speaker to speak in opposition. Do we have anybody else to speak in opposition? We got about four minutes.
Good evening. Claudia Lee, Indian Trail. I'm not for or against, I had questions. The lead abatement was one with all those rounds being fired. Lead is awful. Too many bald eagles, deer, everything's getting killed from lead poisoning. Second thing is, if they're gonna sell weapons there, how are they going to secure them? I don't want them being killed like the group down in Georgia. I think it was a husband, wife, and a son. They had a range, they had a shop, they were, they were killed and over 40 weapons were stolen from that gun range. So I wanna know what their security is gonna be to keep that from happening if you're gonna invite the public. If it's a private club, you know everybody, but if you're gonna start inviting the public, then you're gonna have people coming in casing the joint saying, oh, hey, maybe we can take these guys out and install your weapons. So I'd like to know how you're gonna secure your weapons, because I don't think pawn shops do a good job of it either. That's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone else to speak in opposition? We got about three minutes for those who would like to speak in opposition.
Good evening, members of Suffolk City Council. I'm Delegate Clinton Jenkins. I represent the 76th District, which is Suffolk and Chesapeake, part of Chesapeake. Um, the reason I'm here this evening because I received a number of calls from, uh, my constituents and citizens in Suffolk. I'm excited about the growth opportunities in Suffolk, excited about it. With this particular project, my only concern is more transparency, more transparency and more notice, uh, to the citizens living in that area. Uh, as you are aware, the airport's over there, um, persons over there already suffer from the airport noise. Um, there's flooding over there. A few years ago, we had to get boats to go in there and get, um, um, one of the, um, clergies out of the area because of the flooding. So, uh, my only concern is let's make sure that there's plenty of transparency, the citizens , um, know what's happening over there and, um, warn notice. Thank you so much.
And to get our next speaker to speak in opposition, we've got about two minutes. If anyone else would like to speak in opposition. Hearing those more speakers for opposition, I'd like to offer five minutes worth of rebuttal for the proponents. You have five minutes for rebuttal.
Good evening, esteemed members of council. So good to see you. Uh, very, very few times do I ever address council, but, um, uh, I had the opportunity actually to, uh, view this facility, uh, several months back. Myself and the Chair of Appropriations, we actually went out to the facility. As we are deliberating each year, when we handle everything from the state budget to locality issues to state issues, we try to find synergies and opportunities in localities. Um, the one very unique thing about this facility is I actually think that the applicant really downplayed the opportunity it provides for partnership. Um, this facility is not only state-of-the-art, it's one of the most unique ones probably we will have in the Commonwealth of Virginia, um, and we are very excited about the potential opportunity. Um, myself and the Chair of Appropriations also reached out to the Sheriff's Association and others, and we, we see future opportunities down the road to be able to truly, truly create a partnership with public safety that we'd be very excited about. Um, we did ask some of the questions. I think that's why I thought appropriate to stand up during rebuttal. Um, we did ask about actually, uh, the ability of removal of waste and things of that nature and lead, and that is something that is part of that. And the burms that they have been building are truly huge, so I would, I would say very, very little, if any, concern once that, uh, process is complete, which I believe it would be by now. Um, and last but not least, uh, the opportunity to bring people from outside of the city of Suffolk, uh, for training opportunities, especially with state agencies. We, we welcome opportunities to come and spend a dollar, especially, I'm a personal champion of Suffolk, um, to spend a dollar here, and I think that this will create a, a unique opportunity beyond what we have had in regards to a training facility, and, and I hope this council would, uh, deeply consider those opportunities here. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you would, I know who you are. Please, for the record, your name and address.
Delegate Emily Brewer, Orbit Road, Windsor, Virginia.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we still have three minutes left on rebuttal. If anybody would like to respond to any of the opponents.
I can answer a few of the questions. There's so many, I'm still trying to, uh, put them together, but the lead abatement, the access, the meeting with the civic leagues, we, we met with the civic league at the church. We met with some of the individuals, so everyone had an opportunity to truly visit the site. We actually had a planned visit, and 40% of the people never showed up to, to the visit. That was on our second visit, so we have tried to reach out to the, the community as much as we can. And, and everyone's right, there, there is, there's lead abatement that has to be recognized and a, and a plan that we have in place. But again, those are minimal items of what needs to happen to make this thing a success. And, and we're here to support the community any way we can, law enforcement, the state, however we need to support them. But, you know, some of the questions, they talked about the, the dump trucks. As you know, that was an access for Dominion Power to come through our road to, to rebuild all those power lines. So those trucks you saw weren't us. We're, we'll get the blame for it. And again, right next to us is another solar farm being built. So the trucks you see on those roads are, are there and for Dominion Power. So there's a few of them that are ours, truly, but, but 90% of those trucks was supported by Dominion Power. Again, I, I don't know anything about a, a fire or a, a, a police response. I mean, you guys can probably pull the files, but, uh, from what I'm being told, there's no such thing as that's ever happened. I don't know anything about a two-alarm fire up there. I know there was a brush fire 15 years or so before we bought the property up there, uh, up front, but there was no two-alarm fire. I've never known the police to respond to any occurrences up there. But, you know, as far as the dump trucks and the, and the safety record, I think it speaks for itself. Again, if there's any further questions, I'm, I'm here to, to support that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we've got about another minute and 30 seconds. If anyone else would like to speak in rebuttal. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak during the rebuttal period? Hearing no more speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, questions, comments, or a motion? Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say that, uh, I've heard some of the speakers come up, and I had some concerns about, I think Mr., um, Hunter said that he was not able to visit the site. When I was at the civic league meeting, there were, a list went around for people that wanted to visit the site. And I was told that they were denied by people. And the answer were, the city would not allow anyone else to come visit the site unless this is approved. And well, that's true or not? I don't know. But that's what was told me, and Mr. Hunter might have been one of those on the list because he was at that meeting, because I did not see the list, so I don't know who the people were that were on that list to, uh, to see it. I would like to make a motion that we table this for 30 days to give the people that have still concerns out there, that need to have more clarification on some of this to be made, and I will make a motion that this be table for 30 days.
Councilman Goldberg.
Mayor, I just wanna make some comments.
You got the floor.
I've been out, I went out to the site, uh, took a nice tour of it, very kind to show it around, talk to me. We spent some time out there looking at the site. It is well-prepared, it's well-built. I saw safety features that were there, that were put into it. It, it, uh, has a entrance in which you can control the entrance going into the property, who goes in, who goes out. I can see a need that the city has for training purposes and for others. So with that, I'm, I'm very positive on, on this, this facility. And, um, so that's where I stand at this moment. And, and if, if my motion, I would make a motion of approval, uh, on this, if, if I can make it at this point in time, or do I have to wait for the other?
We have, uh, Vice Mayor made a motion, uh, to continue. Do we have a second of that? Hearing none, do we have a motion for approval from Councilman Goldberg? Any further discussion or a second? Council, Councilman Johnson?
I'd like to have a, Mr. Butler. You're, you're so accommodating, and you have answered all of our questions to the best of your ability. I have another question, though, that was just raised by this young man. As far as federal guidelines go, um, insinuations of there could be federal, um, taxes, federal penalties, all of these types of things, how, how regulated is, is arranged like this by the federal government?
Well, with the uses, sir, that, uh, for the state, the city, we're, we're regulated by DCJS Virginia. They come in and they inspect the facilities, they approve it, they don't approve it. It's a two-part process. It's a part to where the training facility is approved for the cities and municipalities, the state to be able to train there, then there's another approval process that recognizes the, the educational side of it. So it's a two-part process. So they inspect the ranges. The, um, the oversight from the state pretty much regulates, you know, any federal type of, of cleanup process. Now, there is, you know, an abatement program that we are having written by a third party that recognizes that, but, you know, not of being open at this point, we have time to, to recognize where that goes. But we have every systems in place to, for lead abatement, we have every systems in place to support inspections of the facilities by the state and the feds.
And, and from what I understand, you're gonna be working very closely with our police and with our sheriff's department and with other organizations in this area that are looking for these types of facilities. I'm, I'm pretty impressed, to be perfectly honest with you. I'm, I'm of like mind with Mr. Goldberg to go ahead and second this, because I think that it's, with all of the regulations in place and the fact that you are civic-minded and you are gonna look after the community there around you, correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, I don't think, there might be a little lack of communication here, but I don't feel that, that it's any reason to, to delay this at this point. But I'm, I really honestly feel like you're gonna be a good player in our community and that you're gonna be a good part of it. So and as far as the Blackwater issue goes, this is not a Blackwater, correct?
No, sir.
I hope that was a one-time incident that, that...
No, sir. And they were talking about open to the public. It's open to the public to come by membership. They have to be vetted. We promised the police department we'd vet everyone that comes through that door, so everyone has the opportunity. It is no Blackwater, it is no, uh, mercenary-type training. It's, it's law enforcement, the community. I mean, mercenaries will never come there if we're shooting sporting clays, we're shooting quails in the fields, they're, they're not gonna come here and train for that. We're supporting a group of individuals, almost like a golf club, country club. You pay a fee, you come in, this is an area you can rent by the hour. The law enforcement can come in and train X amount of days, the community services, the state, they can all come in at different times and train. That's what this whole facility is about, a controlled, safe environment that supports all the needs of, of everyone involved.
All right, thank you. I feel, I feel comfortable enough to second Mr. Goldberg's motion, um, to, to let this go forward, because I do think it will be, it's on the right piece of property, right area of our city, and with the muffled sounds of the, I'm not a gunshot person either, I don't like hearing it at my back door, but I think that under the controls that you guys have put in place, that it's in the right place for our city, and I think it'll be a real asset to us. So with that, I'll say second.
Okay, we got a motion for approval and a second at this time. Councilman... Oh, yeah, that, that's with the change. Instead of 10:00 PM. That's correct. Councilman Ward?
Mayor, before we continue, I think we need to clarify the motion. The motion should be the approval of CUP 2022-002. There are two separate items, although staff presented them at, as one, there's two separate items with two separate public hearings.
So this, this is the first, first item, first public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, that's right, with the hours.
I agree.
There you go. What he said. Councilman Ward?
Please.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, I also visited two of the facilities, and I was very impressed with the facilities and, you know, presentation. And I, one of the two things, uh, I couldn't figure out how in 20 years, nobody really knew too much about it. I was impressed with that, with all the smart city managers came and all the employees, they didn't know nothing about it till recently. So I, how you held that together, I don't know how, especially in the city of Suffolk. But anyway, I wanna, uh, I heard the same thing that Vice Mayor Bennett heard about the five people that came up there. Do you wanna clarify that?
I'm sorry?
Five people came up and they were denied to come in or something?
No, sir. So what happened was, we, we met with them four times. We invited the city council, Mr. Bennett was on the first, uh, tour and the second tour. We had invited these individuals to come up. At the, at the civic league meeting, they wanted five more to come up. After we'd already spoke three times with them, they just wanted to keep bringing them in there. We had a order put on us in April, and our attorneys, at their recommendation, stated that we cease and desist any operations. Mr. Moore called me and said, I'd like for the city council members to come out, et cetera, et cetera. So we, we outlined for that. We made accommodations to meet with, I assume it was the board members of the civic league. I, I'm not sure who they were. I have a manifest here of, of the, the three people that showed up. And we met with them, and then after that, the attorneys recommended, after we met with planning commission, et cetera, is, hey, limit your exposure, you have a lot of risk out there for people getting hurt, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But we thought we were already past the individuals coming to visit the site, but per recommendations off of the cease and desist order, our attorneys recommended no more traffic on the site after planning commission. So that, that's how that worked out.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Fawcett, have you got any questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett, are you with us?
Yeah.
Just see if you had any questions and comments, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Loud and clear.
Yes.
Very loud.
I was trying to jump in earlier, uh, with some comments, but I can say that Mr. Goldberg and Mr. Johnson put it in perspective. I've had a chance to go out there and spend a lot of time, uh, on a hot summer day with Mr. Todd Butler and his, uh, crew out there, and I can't tell you, um, him being a firearms guy, how much I respect what these guys are trying to do and what this is going to bring to our community, our state, and our local federal groups. He's put a lot of effort out there into this project. He's, he's made a lot of safety headway, the security around the perimeter is just, is just fantastic. I'm fully gonna support him in every measure in he, what he is trying to do on this particular CUP and the follow-on. So I just wanted to have that comment. Very impressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilman Fawcett. Counselperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I took the tour of the facility. It is very impressive, um, very well put together, and appreciate the opportunity to go and tour. Um, the, the point that I wanna make is this is a conditional use permit, and I trust that, that the group involved is gonna fulfill all the requirements of the conditional use permit, but that we understand that if there are violations, that the conditional use permit can be canceled. So, um, I, I feel like, I mean, it's obviously in everybody's best interest to follow the rules that are listed in the CUP and, and, uh, go by all the rules, and I trust that the city will keep an eye on that and, and keep it in force. I think there's some great opportunities, and again, appreciate the opportunity to come for the tour.
Councilman Goldberg? Councilman Goldberg.
Got you. Thank you. One of the ladies speakers, not really against, but she wanted to know about the safety issue of the weapons. I know what I saw when I was out there. Could you maybe explain a little bit how they're protected and...
Sure. I don't want to go into too many designs here, but we have encased ten-by-twelve-foot, controlled eight-inch block, solid fill, concrete wall, concrete roof, and vault doors. What little weapons we have on the premises goes in there every night, so they are locked up inside there. We have cameras, we have electronic locks. It rings every one of our cellphones if anybody steps foot on that property. We have people that stay out there sometimes just to protect the premises. You know, we have facilities to support any type of blast, any type of break-ins, et cetera, et cetera. So all the firearms are locked up in a contained concrete vault that, you know, if they want to try to break in, you know, Merry Christmas, but they're going to be there a while. So without too many details, that is in one of the buildings, and it is secure, has cameras inside and outside, and little stomp areas for security when you come through the door. So, yes, sir.
Council, any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, I'll close it out with a few comments and my own. Number one, I want to thank and commend the applicant for the due diligence that they have taken in this project. I know it is, I personally know this has probably been at least going on for a year in not only the planning stage, but I know that they had met with every single member of council, which, in my thinking, usually does not happen. Lots of times applicants will meet with selected members of council, but not only did they meet with council, but they invited them to the premises. And I can tell you, having lived in Suffolk for forty-seven years, it's amazing that I didn't know it was back there either. You know, it surprises me, you know, every day when I say, "Wow, where did that come from?" So this is a, from everything I can ascertain, is professional, professionally operated, financed, and run facility of it could possibly be of this type. I understand there's always apprehension, everybody, there's apprehension about everything. Nobody likes change, everybody thinks the worst-case scenario. I could ask Mr. Bowers to come up and talk about stray bullets, but a properly outfitted shooting range with the proper berms, the proper control are much safer than somebody hunting a hundred yards out of your backyard, I can tell you that. There are numerous, numerous regulations that he has to contend with, having dealt with the ATF before, that in itself is a minor nightmare as far as accountability. I'm sure there's environmental issues, I could ask you how much insurance you have, but I'm sure it's substantial to, for him to have that type of operation and assume that there's not insurance would not be very rational. The conditions, in the event of an ownership change, the conditions of the CUP still apply to the next individual if it's being used for the same purpose. So there was a discussion there. One of the huge benefits, or there's several rather large benefits, one of it is from the standpoint, the economic benefit, and I know we don't, it's not always about dollars, but it's just one of the things. This facility would be used by local, state, I'm not sure about some federal, but there may be some federal participation also, but I do know that there is state interest in using this facility. Having served on the jail board, and some others, our officer training where they have to go to shoot. I know Franklin had a small range, I think Walters had a small range, you could go to Hampton, but for our police officers in particular, there's the travel time, the time you have to take them off of the street to go qualify. And qualifying, just like you do in the military, I know when I was in the military, regardless of how bad a shot you were, once a year you'd take your M16 and try to hit something with it. And if you were really bad, they'd kind of fudge it and you got to go anyhow, I didn't say that. But with our police officers, you know, you have to qualify every year. So this is time spent off the streets. My conversations with the applicant, and they all appear to be trustworthy individuals, you've got prior military, and I thank you for your twenty-one years as a SEAL in your service, they had, they have offered our officers the ability to train there, not only for qualifying, but for SWAT training as well. I know it was about, I'm going to say about four or five years ago, we had four and a half million dollars that was in the CIP for a shooting range. We couldn't fund it, we had other needs other than a shooting range, and that was four or five years ago. Four and a half million dollars for a shooting range, plus the operational cost every year of another hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to operate it. So this is a huge plus for our city. We're going to have folks visiting our city that normally wouldn't, but more importantly, our officers will be able to use it. They can do facility analysis as far as active shooter drills, they can do a security analysis on each one of our government buildings, they've offered to look at our schools to ensure that they're as secure as they can be. I mean, these are invaluable services that we are in an enviable position to be able to attract and take advantage of, and I really appreciate that. I am confident, because people, citizens' concerns are important, they're very important, they always are. It's our job to take those concerns into consideration, look at the facts, look at the figures, look at the pros, look at the cons. In this particular case, I do not see a downside. I mean, I know you can hear some gunshots. I live on the other side of the lake, I hear them all the time from, where am I? Kings Fork Road? Yeah, from them. But anyhow, and you have some of that. But when you live out in the country, you get people hunting and that sort of thing. My main thing is safety. Having been on the facility, I mean, this place is tight, as tight as any place I've ever seen. There's lots of security, it's a private drive coming in. I like the fact that it requires a membership, not because it involves money, but if there's a membership, it allows them to vet those individuals that are coming in there. So they can do a background check, if part of being a member, and I'm not a member, I plan on talking to them later, but part of the membership may be you agree to a background check, and they do a cursory background check on you before you go. But I'm fully in favor of this. I believe that there's been plenty of transparency, we talk about transparency. What is transparency? Transparency at the bare minimum, at a bare minimum, is following the process, the process of posting, the process of announcing what you're doing, the process of going through the planning commission, the planning department, the process of going through the planning commission. This has been to the planning commission. It was tabled at the planning commission, it came back again at the planning commission, and I know that they have made offers, and I know several folks that have been out there that are not up on this dais, to the citizens to come in and tour their facility. So I'm confident in the application. I think it's a win for our city, and I think it's, when I say "our city," our city is our citizens. I hate to use that word "our city" because people say, you know, "You get the city's money, you get the city this." It's your money, it's not our money. It's not the city, the city is our citizens, and I think it's a win for all of us. So I also support this. So with that being said, we have a motion for approval from Councilman Goldberg with the amendment that our city attorney wrote, what he said.
Yes.
The CUP, excuse me, the CUP, what he said. And we have a second by Councilman Johnson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
No.
Mayor Duman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of six to one, with Vice Mayor Bennett voting in opposition.
Okay, our next...
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
He seconded it, yeah. It's what you get for not wearing a tie. All right, we'll move to our next public hearing, we're having way too much fun. We've got an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a school, charter, private, or parochial on property located at fourteen forty-four, Hosea Road, zoning map forty-four parcel one twenty-seven, and zoning map forty-five parcel twenty-one, account numbers zero five zero zero seven one zero zero, and zero five two zero eight eight zero zero zero. This is CUP twenty twenty-two fourteen. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Kevin, of course, had given a little overview of this as part of the previous public hearing, but he's began at the podium. Should you have any more additional questions or any additional information you want to put in?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I have nothing really additional to add, just a reminder, this is for the two parcels on the eastern side of Hosea Road, and specifically for the private school. This would allow the tactical, non-tactical training on the property, on those two parcels that are zoned agricultural collectively, they're about two hundred acres or so. But this is for that tract of land, specifically for the school. And as a reminder, the planning commission at their meeting July nineteenth voted seven to one to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with conditions. Additionally, staff has found that it can be compatible with the neighborhood. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Madam Clerk, please, before we open the public hearing, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five-minute period for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing, will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone to speak in favor? Hearing none, do we have anyone to speak in opposition?
John, the file eleven eighteen Hosea Road. Come in speaking, not full opposition again, but in opposition to CUP twenty twenty-two dash fourteen. My concern is there has been no estimate of census population for the school, or how many students they expect, or that there was no traffic study or impact to fire safety rescue, or the impact of the traffic created and generated by the school on Hosea Road, particularly for fire rescue and police and federal life, safety, and health response to the citizens. That was not part of the staff report, it was not part of the planning commission report or presentation, and Hosea Road has had quite a bit of increased traffic, and that is a concern to me because the response time from fire and police is three minutes, and with this new traffic, it has been an estimated of four point seven minutes, and that is my concern.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else to speak in opposition? Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in opposition? If not, we have a rebuttal period? If anybody would like to speak in rebuttal? Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. I'm sorry, rebuttal? Got to move faster.
Sir, Jack Claude with Hargard Yor. We did meet with city staff with regard to traffic. Robert told us at that time that there was not enough traffic on Hosea Road to warrant any further studies.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak during the rebuttal period? Anybody else like to speak during the rebuttal period? Hearing no additional speakers? Public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration, what's your pleasure, Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a statement first. I heard the gentleman talk about the training and how many kids and students or whatever. You got a wrong picture, I think, of, this is a training facility, and we had to give it a name or title, so it's a school, it's a training facility. And so people will make appointments to come to be trained, and organizations would be there to be trained and what have you. There is no total supply of people coming in and out every day doing that unless they want to be trained in that case. So that would not be an issue on that. So with that in mind, I'd like to move for approval of CUP twenty twenty-two dash zero one four. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Mayor, I'd like to second.
Okay, Councilman Fawcett?
Yeah, I'd like to second that motion, we fully support it with this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. We got a motion for approval from Councilman Goldberg and a second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
No.
Mayor Duman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of six to one, with Vice Mayor Bennett voting in opposition.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a park slash open space on property located at two nineteen West Washington Street and one oh one South Saratoga Street, zoning map thirty-four G one eighteen A, parcels three sixty-one, three sixty-two, three sixty-five, and three sixty-eight, and zoning map thirty-four G seventeen A, parcels one sixty-eight and one sixty-nine, account numbers three five three two two seven zero zero zero, three five three seven three seven two zero zero, three five two one seven zero 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 zero, and three five two one six nine zero zero zero. This is CUP twenty twenty-two fifteen. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, again, Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. This is a conditional use permit for park open space generally in the downtown area. The use permit would allow for the construction of the proposed festival event park, which you are all familiar with. The properties are located in the mixed-use core use district in the central growth area. As noted, the property is in the downtown area, is zoned CBD, Central Business District, which is a zoning designation that allows for parks and open space uses with a conditional use permit only. So that's why we are here this evening. The site is comprised of four separate properties consisting of two acres in area total. The park will have two entrances with one off of South Saratoga Street and one off of Jackson. The festival event park will be a community park in its plan for, in the city's downtown historic district located at the intersection of West Washington Street and South Saratoga. The park will be booked, will book in a block with the new library. The park is designed to be an inviting open space, open to the public year-round, and it will be used for events such as concerts and farmers' markets. We have discussed potential hours of operation with Mr. Mark Furlough, the Director of Parks and Recreation, and stated the facility will not be used outside the hours of, the following hours of operation, nine to nine p.m. Sunday through Thursday, and nine a.m. to ten p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. The perimeter of the park is going to consist primarily of trees to create a pretty decorative environment along West Washington Street and South Saratoga Streets. There's going to be benches, tree line, conveniently placed electrical outlets to allow for a variety of uses. There will be an eight-foot-tall painted wooden wall at the western edge of the site that's going to run parallel to the wall of the adjacent building to screen any utilitarian areas from the existing business there. There will be parking on-site for forty cars to the south access points of South Saratoga and Jackson Streets. Additionally, there will be paved paths through the park that will connect the entrance, a food truck eating area to the northwest corner, and temporary restrooms for events. There will be some... There will be some removable bollards as well that will be utilized during events for the safety of the public in attendance. The physical improvements related to this proposal, the Suffolk Festival Event Park site recently did go before the Historic Landmarks Commission as a part of an application to obtain a certificate of appropriateness, because this is in the historic district as well, and the HLC approved the proposed design elements on June tenth of this year. Staffs evaluated the proposed use for compliance with the city's established criteria for conditional uses and recommends approval with the conditions as outlined in our report. Lastly, the Planning Commission at their meeting on July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, voted eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with the conditions outlined in staff's report. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to address any concerns at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Gary Jones, Director for Capital Programs and Buildings here for the City of Suffolk. And I am the applicant on behalf of the city for the CUP request. As Kevin nicely stated, the park, you've seen this design before. I've gone through it many times, just a few months ago, I think. So I would like to say this is a feature in the adopted downtown plan. We look forward to getting this project moving and under construction. The plan is to have this open for the first events sometime in June of next year. So I'll stand here to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Christopher Dove, eight fifty-two, Colonel Lee Drive in Suffolk. I think this would be a great thing to have in Suffolk, to bring more people downtown and promote the businesses that are downtown. One thing I would like the council to consider is the forty parking lot seems to be small for the venue that they're proposing. In the future, consider increasing the parking probabilities or possibilities within downtown so that this venue can go ahead and succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Hi, Claudia Lee, three two six zero Indian Trail, full speed ahead, but you're going to have to increase the parking limit, the two-hour limit? Because whenever I go downtown and eat, and I don't want to walk around, I always have to worry about getting out of there in two hours. So you need to make that a little bit longer, because those forty spaces are going to fill up in a hurry.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Do we have anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none, do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no more speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. What is your pleasure, Councilman Johnson?
Like the lady said, full speed ahead, let's approve it and move on. It's time.
Good motion. We've got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson.
May I second it, Mayor?
We've got a second from Councilman Fawcett. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Fawcett. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to rezone, amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk, to change the zoning from RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District to CBD Central Business District, zoning district for properties located at one fourteen Lee Street, zoning map thirty-four G seventeen A, parcels one seventy-six, one eighty-two, and one eighty-eight, account numbers three five one zero one nine zero zero zero, three five one zero two zero 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 zero, and three five two five five eight zero zero zero. This is RZN twenty-two twenty-two ten. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mr. Wine will also provide this overview on this item.
Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As stated, this is a rezoning request to rezone three parcels from RM, that's our residential medium-density zoning district, to CBD to accommodate the construction of the new downtown library. The properties are designated mixed-use core district in the central growth areas designated by the twenty-thirty-five comprehensive plan. Here you have the three parcels. As I noted, these are currently zoned RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District, which is a district where libraries are not permitted as a matter of right. You could get a conditional use permit there, but in collaboration with the Department of Capital Programs, and for the sake of zoning consistency with the property, the city is pursuing a rezoning request to CBD Central Business District for these parcels so that the entire library site maintains the same zoning designation. Here you have the rezoning exhibits, the actual surveys associated with this, so you get an idea of what these parcels look like. They're all quite small. The largest, I believe, will actually serve as a BMP pond, but the site for the proposed libraries can comprise of many parcels, of which only these three are zoned RM. Like I said, that does not allow for the construction of a library. Here we have a snippet out of the downtown master plan, which was our most recent plan we have on file, adopted in twenty-eighteen. This plan specifically calls out an opportunity site called Library Square, which is comprised of this property. The proposed approximately thirty-eight thousand square-foot library will have an urban presence along West Washington Street, with the main entrance is set back from the street to help form a modestly scaled civic plaza. In the rear of the building, will have a neighborhood presence with an accessible outdoor activity space that supports the library's services. Lee Street, along the western property line, will be redesigned and converted to a one-way street to facilitate vehicular access for the variety of public and staff functions. Parking will be located along Lee Street, as well as the rear of the building, and there will be a new stormwater management facility constructed by the city on a panel along West Washington Street and just on the other side of Lee Street. Hardscaping and landscaping will be designed as a part of the library project to integrate the parcel into the fabric of the overall development. So staff has evaluated the rezoning request for compliance with the twenty-thirty-five comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Ordinance, and additionally, looked at the twenty-eighteen downtown master plan in which it certainly coordinates with. So with that being said, with this being a city priority as it relates to the construction of the downtown library, staff is recommending its approval. The Planning Commission, at their meeting of July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, by a vote of eight to zero, voted to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with no conditions. Excuse me. This is a straight rezoning. So with that being said, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. I'll be happy to address any concerns at the conclusion of the public.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. It's me again, Gary Jones. I'm the applicant once again on behalf of the city for this rezoning request. All I'll say is this, your approval of this rezoning request will get us one step closer to the long-awaited Central Library. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other speakers to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Persons. I live at twelve forty-seven Murphy's Mill Road. And congratulations to the city and all of you. What a wonderful, wonderful project. We have an outstanding library staff that doesn't just run a library, but they've turned it into a verb, "they library," with outstanding programs for the citizens of our town. And so to have this wonderful facility to just enhance what they do makes it a very exciting time. So thank you. I especially appreciate the inclusion of meeting space within, because that's something that's been lacking for some of us, whether it's a book club that wants to meet, just to have a space that's a community-centered, focusing on education, small business, and living. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker to speak in favor.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Denise Merton. I live at forty forty-one Kingston Parkway. I spoke here a couple of years ago in support of funding for this library. I couldn't be more excited about anything, I think, in the city other than the library. I have been a Suffolk Literacy Council volunteer, and that was the capacity I came here to speak about this issue before. It is so important to have this meeting space for everyone in our community. I agree with the former speaker. I think the library staff does a wonderful job of offering such a variety of programs, and this building will just make that more possible to do.
Thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker to speak in favor? Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? If not, do we have anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. It's been a long time coming. Appreciate all the work and all the conversation that we've had over a long period of time of trying to get it as best we can, the way we want it. I'm excited about it, and I think it'd be great for our downtown. So with that, I'd like to make a motion for approval, Mayor, of RZN twenty-two twenty-two zero ten. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We've got a motion for approval. Councilman Ward?
I'd second.
Councilman Fawcett?
Sir, I just wanted to make a comment that I want to thank everybody for their hard work in putting forth this library. We've certainly been pushing to try to get the ground breaking on it, so I'm fully supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Vice Mayor Bennett?
I just have to make one, and I tell you this, is to say, this has been a long time coming. I've been sitting on this council for a long time, and we started out, we was going to do two libraries at one time, one downtown and one in the northern part of the city. Took all the money from down here and moved it to the northern part to do the one up there first, and we forgot about the one downtown. So now we have really made the circle, and now it's time to do it downtown. So I am ready, fired up, and ready to go.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? I also concur, I am probably as excited about downtown as anybody when you look what we got going on. We just talked about the festival park, we're talking about the library, just some demolition going on here shortly, I think in the next eighteen or twenty-four months, you're going to see a whole different downtown. And I think that's going to attract considerable amount of private investment. And of course, the ultimate goal is to make Suffolk a destination. We want people to wake up in Norfolk, in Virginia Beach, in Smithfield, and say, "Let's go to downtown Suffolk. Let's go downtown and shop. Let's go down for the entertainment. Let's go to the cultural arts center. Let's put it all together." So that's the goal, and we're getting there. So with that being said, we've got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Ward? Did you second? Who seconded it? You made the motion. Who was the second? Councilman Ward, there we go. Okay, just confirming that. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion's approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, we have no ordinances this evening, we have no resolutions. We do have a staff report, a police and fire public safety update. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight's going to be a two-part presentation. We're going to have Police Chief Alfred Chandler to do the lead-off, and he's going to be followed by Fire Chief Mike Baraki this evening. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I would like to start with some good news on the flock safety camera program. Over half our cameras have been, that have, over half the cameras that have been purchased have been installed at this time. We're expecting the rest of them to be installed within the next week to two weeks, and we expect the program to be fully live and operational by the end of the month. So I'm really, really excited to see that happening. But for the purposes of today's conversation, I would like to focus on our crime scene investigations unit. Our CSI unit consists of four technicians and a supervisor. These forensic professionals hold degrees in scientific disciplines and have established themselves as true professional scientists, to say the least. The unit maintains twenty-four-hour-a-day coverage through staffing, through staggered shifts, and on-call responsibilities. This unit is responsible for processing major crime scenes for forensic evidence, but they also provide speaking engagements, and they do a great deal of speaking engagements to schools, to special events, as well as community organizations. They also do a lot of photography for the city for different city functions and events. Our CSI unit uses a number of computer programs and other equipment that we will discuss briefly today. NIBIN, which is the National Integrated Ballistics Information Network, AFIS, the Automated Fingerprint Identification System, the BURLA system, cell phone acquisition technology, and the FARO Crime Scene Mapping Program. This slide shows the productivity of this unit. And as you can see, in twenty-nineteen, they recovered over twenty-five-hundred pieces of evidence, and they also processed eighty-eight firearms. They did this while also conducting thirty-seven speaking engagements. Though things slowed down in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one due to the COVID pandemic, this year, we are on track for even greater level of productivity, with over seventeen-hundred pieces of evidence collected and eighty-five firearms processed, as well as twenty-four speaking engagements, and that is since from January first to August first of this year. So far this year, we have had three submissions for DNA that we got DNA hits from, and seventeen submissions that identified cartridge casings. It should be noted that the Department of Forensic Science, our state crime lab, has been generally backlogged about six to twelve months. So those numbers will get better in time. So we expect to see an increase in those numbers, a pretty rapid increase as time continues to move. We are extremely proud to have our forensics unit accredited by ANAB, which is the ANSI National Accreditation Board. We were the first in the area and the second in the state to be accredited. And we're proud to say currently that we are the only jurisdiction in Virginia to continue to hold this certification. We consider it a great honor to have it. It took a lot of work from this team. So now, turning to some of the systems that we use, I'm just going to use a few of them just to give you a brief overview of this part of our agency. The FARO system is a computer system that is brought to crime scenes to develop a three-D rendering of a location. It's used in court to aid in visually telling the story of the evidence we collect, and it can be linked to photos and videos to really bring the crime scene alive in the courtroom. So basically, what this thing does is it's some technology that they bring out to a crime scene, and they're able to utilize this equipment, and it gives them a great deal of points. They take that data and information back to the office, and when they take it back to the office, they input it into a computer system. to the office, they input it into a computer system, and they do some type of scientific abracadabra work, and pictures pop out. These pictures are scaled, these pictures are actually scaled. So we use this information to show relationship between different items. It may be a piece of evidence, and you can see how far it is from another piece of evidence. And we're able to actually overlay pictures and video over top of that information so we can really tell the story of a piece of evidence. It's a great piece of equipment that we use. The AFIS system, which stands for Automated Fingerprint Identification System, this is a computer system that aids us in identifying fingerprints. We currently have a certified fingerprint examiner on staff that works within this unit. We also are currently in the process of training an additional member of the team in hopes that she will also be able to obtain this very challenging certification. Basically, this AFIS program, what it does is when we get fingerprints, they're able to input that fingerprint picture into a computer system. That computer system will then provide them with possible matches, and then the fingerprint examiners have to then go back and do the agonizing, painstaking job of looking at these and finding different points to be able to definitely identify without a doubt that this fingerprint belongs to a particular individual. What we, what is required of law is it has to be two people that look at this and are able to identify it. So currently, we actually partner with the City of Chesapeake, and they come in and also assist us until we get our secondary person up and running, because again, it takes quite a bit of work to do. And we are also currently upgrading to a new AFIS system this year, so that's a great deal of work that we're doing, but we're very, very excited about staying on the cutting edge of technology to ensure that we have the very best technology for solving complex These days, everyone has a cell phone. Historically, Suffolk, like other Hampton Roads cities, have taken the phones to Virginia State Police to extract data from those cell phones when they're believed to be involved in a crime. I'm very proud to say that we're one of very few cities in our area that have the capability to conduct our own extractions from cell phones and other storage devices. This also helps other agencies around our area that do not have this technology. So we're able to not only extract the, if we have a person with a phone and we get a search warrant for the contents of that phone, they are able to pull all of that data off that phone. We also have that technology that will crack the code on the phone in the event that the person does not give us the required information to get into the phone. It took quite a bit, and it's been quite a bit of a financial investment, but it has been a great help and success in catching law violators. The BURLA technology is some of our newest technology, and again, we are the only city in Hampton Roads that has this capability. This allows us to extract important data from vehicles. Often, this, this data that we are able to get from vehicles is essential to criminal investigations. However, with this particular program, I am not able to tell you a great deal on it because we, it actually requires a non-disclosure agreement to be able to continue to control the effectiveness of that program. But I'm very happy about the fact that we have that and we're able to utilize that in our criminal investigations to extract additional information. This vehicle, the Mobile Incident Command Center, we call the MIC. This is slightly smaller than the big bus. We have the big bus, and this is a little bit smaller vehicle. This is basically our rolling investigations bureau. This vehicle provides office space on scene for investigators, but it also provides workspace and equipment storage for our CSI unit to include equipment needed to conduct excavations and other complex operations. This provides our investigators, our investigative division, electricity, computers, internet access, interview and meeting space, along with connectivity to our department's records management system, as well as the LINK system, which connects us to records management systems of other agencies around the area and around the country as well. So just a few basic highlights of our CSI unit. This unit is responsible for our basic investigation scene, I'm sorry, basic crime investigation scene school, also our advanced crime scene investigation school, and our annual excavation school. These schools are attended by forensic technicians and officers hailing from every jurisdiction in our local area, as well as other agencies, such as the Department of Defense Police, the Virginia State Police, different firing investigative services, several other states around the nation, and a host of other jurisdictions. So the basic school teaches law enforcement professionals about the basics of investigating a crime scene, extracting the information, finding, finding evidence, and how to properly process that evidence so it can go to the state lab for further processing. Our advanced school gets a little bit deeper into that, but I really want to just spend just a few moments, I'm trying to keep it brief, but I want to spend a few moments talking about this excavation school, because our excavation school, I don't think most of our citizens realize that people across the country have come to this school to be trained on how to properly excavate a body. What, what they do in this school, and it's pretty amazing, is they teach step by step how to find evidence and information in a shallow grave situation or grave situation. We've seen across the country where people have been the victim of heinous crimes and the body has been buried. There is a whole process to dealing with that so that we don't miss any evidence. This school is, to the degree of complexity, that at the end of the school, they use a mannequin as a body, and at the end of the school, they rebury this mannequin. That mannequin then sits there all year under the ground, just as a real body would. The vegetation begins to grow over top of it, and they get a real sense of real-life expectation of what's going to happen when you have something that's been in the ground for a very long time. It is an incredible, incredible school, and it's right here at the Suffolk Police Department, and I'm extremely proud about it. We have a member of this team that conducts accreditation assessments. They actually do some work for a company, working on accreditation, so they become expert in, they've become experts in that field. We have a member who is a peer reviewer for two different international forensic journals. I want to take a moment to specifically say that we are proud of our fingerprint examiner, Mary DeLugo, who was named SPD's Civilian of the Year twice. She is the only person in this, in the history of this police department that has received that honor two separate times. The work of this team helps us to take some of the burden off of our state labs for, which we only have four in the entire Commonwealth, and it also provides us with a means of getting forensic information more quickly through scientifically processing evidence locally. I'm very proud of the work being done by this unit, and I will be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, any questions or comments? I hear none, and I just have one question for you. I know we've got about half the flock cameras up. I'm sorry, Councilman Goldberg, you guys gotta be...
Chief, I'd like to just thank you for your, your team's support, and I've been able over the number of years to meet many of your people on your staff. They are outstanding people, officers, and I just, I'm proud that we have been able to fund you from the council so that you can have all the toys you need to keep us safe, and I really do appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett? If you get any.
Just a brief comment to Chief Chandler. I really enjoyed your presentation. It was very informative.
Thanks.
Your CSI people are top-notch. I had a chance to meet one of them during the photo ops for the State of the City, and I got to tell you, she was very good to work with. But it seems like you've got a lot going on there. I hope we can continue to find ways to give you more assets to combat some of the things that we are dealing with within our city to get this crime even more down. So I appreciate your staff and all of you for doing the best you can, and continue to do good work, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Ward.
Yes, so Chief, very impressive, very impressive. You got me staring and listening, looking at that, and you tell you the first and the second and the only, and the only one doing this, and you, I mean, this is very impressive. I'm glad that we have you coming to update us what's going on. It's very, very impressive to not only me, part of the people that know you're definitely doing, improving, and taking this police department to higher hikes, man. Thank you so much for giving that information to us.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Chandler, for all that you and your staff and your men and women in your department does every day to keep our city safe, and I think what you are doing, you are showing the public how much you appreciate the men and women in your department for what they are doing, and we cannot thank them enough either for what they are doing to keep our city safe and the things that you are doing with your staff to improve the quality of the city as far as crimes are concerned. So pass that on, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, Chief, I just had a couple of questions. Once again, thank you for everything your folks do every day. I'm glad we can provide you with the toys and the tools, right? To do your job.
Thank you.
To keep our citizens safe. You said you have installed about half of the flock cameras.
Yes, sir.
And for those folks who may not know what the flock cameras are, those are motion-activated license plate readers. So they're posted, your car goes by, the motion of the car activates the camera, it takes a picture of the plate, the plate sent through a database, and if that vehicle, or the owner of that vehicle is wanted for anything at all, then our department gets notified right away, and then that way you can respond to it. We also have some portable cameras. Talk about some other initiatives for downtown. We've got some portable cameras. I believe we've got one in place now, placed strategically. Oh, we got three?
Yes, sir.
We got three now. See, they've been moving fast. So we've got three portable cameras that we can place in strategic locations where there has been any incident of crime. These are ones that are similar to what Norfolk put into use right after the head date incident on Granby Street, so they're a little pricey, but they'll be worth every penny of it. I've also been asked about speed limit signs on Main Street. I've had a few folks that came to me a month or so ago and talked about, we need some more signage on Main Street, and from speaking to the city manager, we have that in the works with some flashing 25s coming both ends of Main Street. Hopefully, we can do a little bit with traffic control there. And these public safety meetings that we're trying to have on a fairly regular basis are to keep our public informed, not only of what we're capable of, but also in regards to any incidents we may have had and how we've been responding to them and that sort of thing, just basically to keep our citizens more informed, more transparency with what's going on, what initiatives we're taking to keep our citizens safe, and how we are addressing the issues that have risen since we had our last meeting. So thank you very much for your report, very informative as far as CSI. I knew we had a CSI, but we've got some things that nobody else has. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we've concentrated on the police department the last three months, so I thought we're only right to let Chief Baraki have his time, and you're talking about someone with a lot of toys.
Yeah.
And that's why I have a lot of pictures.
We would call those tools, so too much to be called toys.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, it's my honor to follow Chief Chandler and to give you an update on Suffolk Fire Rescue and what we do each and every day for the citizens, and as I started by saying, we're 300 firefighters, officers, paramedics, and administrative professionals that serve. We have 74 on shift each day. So with those 74 on shift each day, we cover nine firehouses. We are working on our 10th firehouse, the capital and city government for our 10th firehouse, but assuming you'll have over 85 firefighters, paramedics, officers that are serving the citizens. In that advance, in the next slide, and some of the stats that we have, the fire rescue department, we are a blend of capital, because we have buildings, purchasing, because we procure many pieces of equipment and specialized pieces of equipment, so purchasing, city staff, there's nothing I do every day that I don't have consultation with staff, finance, budget, HR. So as you see these slides and these stats, 911 upstairs, men and women of dispatch, we're really a bunch of agencies working together to serve. Seventeen thousand four calls last year for the whole calendar year. This year, we've already hit this for the first two quarters of the calendar year. We're at 9,177, so we're up about 8% of call volume. But with that, on the left side, you see the 12,713 medical calls, EMS. That's 70% of our run volume. We send fire trucks, ambulances, we call those medics, and paramedics on the, on the, on the ambulances, to 70% of the runs we do. And with that, we provide through Dr. Carl Wenzel, our OMD, our Operational Medical Director, some of the highest-quality advanced life support care you'll find anywhere in the Commonwealth. And we have a huge relationship with not only Dr. Wenzel, but with TMS, Tyward Mercy Medical Services, who is our agency that oversees us through the Commonwealth of Virginia on how we provide our ALS care. We partner with Nightingale, we'll get to that in a minute, with seven area hospitals. We're the only agency in the Commonwealth that goes to seven hospitals every day, from Riverside, Southampton, Memorial, Bell Harbor, Children's Hospital, Norfolk General, you name it, we're there. And so you have a very busy EMS system. When you look down, alarms, hazards, investigations, 3,600 calls last year and already at 2,300. That's your fire alarm activations, your odor of gas, discharge of materials into the storm drains. We call them service calls, but you know they're important to the citizen when their fire alarm activates, and that's what comes as that 3,600 calls last year and 2,300 this year. Working fires, that smoke or fire visible, usually from buildings, vehicles, storage units, tire, storage facilities, et cetera. So 380 working fires a year, so that's what goes down and gives you your property loss. So last year, for example, over 3.4 million in property loss, 743,000 in content, and over 4.1 million. That's what we strive every day when we say protect property. Certainly, lives are important, and we want to always protect lives, but certainly we want our insurance rating to be as, as nice as we can. So this year alone, we're at $3.7 million in loss. We've had a lot of high-loss fires, but as we get to the Fire Marshal's Office here in a second, I'll tell you, we're trying to mitigate that from happening in the future. So as you can see, we're a very busy urban fire rescue department. Pictures, Chief, I had to add pictures. It helps us coloring books and all helps the firefighters out. So you can see, kind of, this is the work, some of the pictures of work we've had this year from Bell Street, Moore Avenue, the bottom middle of where we're opening a roof. So we're doing things from suppressed fires, opening roofs, to cutting people and citizens out of vehicles. You see the picture of, in the middle top of, I call him Tango, but Lieutenant Drake up there, there's a firefighter there who's getting ready to perform advanced life support care to a citizen trapped in a vehicle. So we may look like firefighters at times, but when we walk through the area hospitals, we have to turn our gear on and, and care for our citizens in any manner we can. Upper-left corner is, is an animal that was rescued out of a building fire for which police departments and animal control was involved in that rescue of that, of that animal to try to get them care. And lower-right corner is Derby Brackett, Ms. Brackett, who was rescued out of the six lanes last year, but we had a very nice reunion with her. And we partner with, in this case, Nightingale Area Ambulance, and Denise Bayless, who is the Ops Manager there, to provide swift and competent transport by air or by ground anywhere in Hampton Roads. Back to a little bit of stats, and so I talked about our fire loss. Again, we want to make that number as small as possible and certainly preserve life, but our Fire Marshal's Office not only does preventive measures, we call it community risk reduction, that's what we really care about, but also outreach. So investigations, that's your fire investigators. You see in the bottom there, there was a building fire on Moore Avenue the other day. You see the flags there. It's not a great picture, Chief, but... It's not a great picture, Chief, but our little form of CSI is, you know, green flags like that, and we have to mark evidence and take samples and all. So that's a small picture of what we do there. So 270 fire investigations last year, that's everything from buildings on fire, abandoned vehicles, et cetera. Bomb explosives, by code, fire rescue handles, bombs, threat the bomb, threat to burn, explosives, 14 last year and 14 already this year. Plans reviews, we, Ashley Williams is our fire plans reviewer. I see her going through some very complex plans on how apparatus can enter, exit buildings, location of fire suppression systems, hookups, Knox Box locations, very detailed work. And we're very fortunate of Ashley doing that for the department. As you can see, she's on pace a double amount of work than she did last year. Business inspections, we do get into our businesses. We owe that to our citizens and by the code to actually inspect our businesses. And we're not there to be punitive, it's only to make sure that the people who walk in and patronize any business has a feeling of safety. And there is the code that we follow on that. And you see last year, 674. This year, we're at 242, so we are in the businesses. Permits, those permits or anything from fireworks, we issue permits for tanks, above and below-ground tanks, permits for hazardous materials, storage of, proper storage of hazardous materials. So permits are issued. Scene security, Chief and I have worked out that when a fire apparatus or an ambulance goes on a medical scene, and it could be a domestic, anything, in which we call scene security for fire rescue and police is busy and their duties, then our fire investigators will respond and provide that security for our firefighters and medics. Pre-fire plans, that goes into when we come into a business, and we will do what's called pre-fire planning, and we will note exits, location of utilities, gas cutoffs, corridors, schools, businesses. And what that happens is we have apps working through IT that we have real-time data, kind of like what Chief is showing from CSI, but we have it on apps, that we know where our exits are and where our firefighters are at. So it's very, very complex work, but we do that before the fire. So when there is a fire that occurs, we know how to exit the buildings and command and control. And finally, we had two life safety camps last year, three already this year, and we have 30-person camp. So 60 and 90 children, of course, respectively, came through and have fire life safety camps. And if you look down in the two corners of those pictures, we have children that attended. But in the lower-right corner, you see one of Chief Chandler's police officers is doing bike helmet safety. So we integrate sheriff, we integrate police, and we integrate fire department into our life safety camp, so we integrate that. So it's not just the fire department doing that. Accomplishments, and on this slide, because I think it's important for our accomplishments, we have a 40-person recruit academy ongoing. It will end up being 12 months when completed. We have 32 people still, candidates still in the academy. Two of them are paramedics, so they're already out. And we had lost three attrition, six candidates to this point, which is actually a pretty good amount of non-people leaving our academy. So we've had a very successful academy. Fireboat one's in service, that's a 34-foot Munson powered by a twin 425 outboards. Mr. Moore, that's for you. That means a lot to him. I know it goes fast, but that means more to him than me. But it's a very beautiful vessel. The picture was on the first slide. It's the most state-of-the-art, largest fireboat in the Hampton Roads, in the Commonwealth, actually. And it serves our citizens in the port very well. A ladder 11 is that tiller in the lower-left corner. That's on Moore Avenue the other day. We flew water out of it for about seven hours and the other three ladder trucks. But we had a problem when Amazon came knocking in, we didn't have a ladder truck that reached the roof. And that's a 4.1 million square foot business. So graciously, through finance, the CIP process, city government, the manager, and council, that's a 107-foot ascendant ladder. So we can comfortably reach the top of the Amazon building right now. The second, the sister truck of that truck will be coming downtown. It'll be delivered in November. We'll have two tiller trucks in the city, which really works out well for us. New Station 11, the lower-right corner is Gary, an elevation drawing. Thank you, thank you, elevations. Again, I did that by crayon before I came in today, so it kind of looks nice. Gary made it look nicer on CAD drawings. But that's, that's a look of what new firehouse will be up in North Suffolk. We're very proud of that project, and we look to go to bid sometime in the fall. And there's a new apparatus storage building behind Fire Headquarters, Station 6. It's about 80% complete. It's a beautiful building, will give us much more storage than we need, area for evidence collection for fire investigations, a quartermaster building for our gear and equipment. The new Project Lifesaver drone donation, a little bit of stats on that. It's a Lockheed Martin Indigo fourcopter. It's valued at $50,000. That was donated by Project Lifesaver and the board. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for that and the service that you do on that board. That drone, that aircraft, it's really more of an aircraft than a drone, will be able to allow us to have an elevation look at people who are in Project Lifesaver and for which we could have about a three-to-five mile range to find instead of about 100-yard range on ground transmitters. And that was actually donated to the Department of Fire Rescue and to the Police Department, for which we appreciate that, and that is going to be in service very shortly. And finally, the Carolina Road Training Facility. We are looking at a burn building through a grant to be built on that, and we have an estimated completion date of that of June 1, 2024. As I, and the presentation is, we will receive site visit in the fall for international accreditation. We will be open up our department for a peer visit for the Commission of Fire Accreditation International, for which we hope to be in March in Orlando 23, receive first-time accredited agency status. And that's my presentation. I'd like to turn it over for any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. Counsel, Councilman Goldberg, you have been first a lot today.
Oh, you've been very kind to me.
I don't know if you've kind of impressed the crowd or what to do.
No, you were very kind to me. Chief, talk about the drone.
Yes, sir.
When we had it out at the airport, I was totally impressed, the purpose of it, what it does, and how it goes. And I think people need to know more about that, the drone, and what goes on there.
Yes, sir. So there's a payload underneath the body of the fourcopter. You can imagine a drone with the four blades that are turning. And underneath that payload, it looks like, almost like, an air-conditioned-style coil unit. And that is what we consider to be the transmitter that will then go back to a box that the pilot will have. And as the drone gains elevation and can have a three-to-five mile range, the person that we're tracking, who has a transmitter on their ankle or on their wrist, depending on where the client, we call the client, has it, then the beacon will come back. And then it's like, at that point, the drone will then make progress in that direction, where then the ground crews will then get closer and closer and closer. And we can see a success rate of a find of seven minutes, and right now, we're averaging about 26 minutes on our finds. But we think with proper utilization and quick deployment, it could be even quicker than that. So I hope, Mr. Goldberg, I answer your question on that.
It's directed to the people that have all access or mentor.
Out, we can find them faster before something really happens to them. And I think it's a fantastic, fantastic piece of equipment that we have, and appreciate the donation of it to us and the effort that your team has in doing that. It's just a fabulous piece of equipment.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Fawcett, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, sir, ma'am. Thank you very much. First off, you know, I give a lot of sincere gratitude to our fire department as well, because they do an awful lot in their day's time, their mission. I got to tell you, we all know today's times are heavy in the EMS side of the house. And I want to tell you, I had, you know, unfortunate opportunity a few weeks ago, to have to ride in that ALS unit to go down to oversee. And the treatment that I got, didn't matter who I was, but I felt the treatment that I got was just a bunch of things. It was just, I can't say enough of the crew that came, and I was in desperate need of help, and they prepared me. You know, so our men and women, every day, are out there pounding the ground, answering these calls. And we're fortunate enough in the city of Suffolk to be able to provide it, which I think we have provided them with superior equipment. And we, in my time, sitting on council, I will always support their needs for what they need on a day-to-day basis to complete their mission and help the citizens here get services they need when the call goes in. Just remember, when you see something, whether it's a police car, emergency call, or a firetruck going down the road, or ambulance, someone's having a bad day. So we need to give appreciation to those folks more than you know every day for what they do. And I just want to thank the chief and the staff. I want to thank the council and the manager for allowing us to provide everything we need to give them, because without all this equipment, they just could not function in a safe manner. And I think it tells the story itself. But again, I want to say thank you. You do good work. I'm looking forward to hearing them get accredited, which is a big deal. I've been through that process, and I know what it takes. And it's going to be great that they're going to get accredited. So that's all I have to say. May I thank you for allowing me to speak for a moment?
Thank you, Councilman Fawcett. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Chief, for your presentation and
Yes, sir.
for all your bells and whistles and your toys. I think that I saw the boat, and I went aboard, and they gave me a tour of it. And that's a jewel. And it's something that you can use out there in shallow water or wherever you need to get to, to assist our citizens. So that's a great tool that you have in your toolbox. So I want to say thank you all for all that you do. And with the drone, maybe you can give us a little short presentation, bring it in, so council will be able to give us a short demonstration, not an hour demonstration, of what it does and how it works, like we did at the airport.
Yes, sir.
When we had the board meeting out there.
Yes, sir.
And I think it'd be very educational for the public to actually see exactly how that thing works. And I want to say, be on behalf of the Project Lifesaver Board, to the public, this is funds that is donated through the public. And we raised the money through all of you to purchase this and didn't cost the city anything. So we turn it over to the fire department to handle it, because they have the tools and the people to maintain that. And we cannot thank you enough for your pilots and all, and everyone that work in your department. EMS, they do an outstanding job. And with all the things that you all are going through now with all the fires and all, we cannot thank you enough for what you do each and every day. Thank you again.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Ward.
Yes, I'd like to thank you also, Chief, for your leadership. I have noticed over the years, and I'm firsthand with the EMS team, I've seen them in action. And like you said, they are very respectful and very informational, and I was impressed how they operated. But like I said, thank you so much for your leadership, because from bottom up to top, top, bring it down, and I think you're doing a great job. Fire Department also, thank you for the new firehouse coming up there. You're the city manager. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Just want to mention a few things. Thank you very much for your presentation, but just to remind everyone, 31% of our budget goes to public safety. 31%, that's number one. Looking out for our citizens and keeping them safe every day. I'm kind of old-school, so I don't really think about the fire department and the medical aspect of it. You know, it used to be fire department, rescue squad, fire department, rescue squad. But when I looked at your numbers up there, 2,250 ALS, and I think that's advanced life support, those are like real calls people would.
Right. They're required medication, IVs, advanced airways, advanced life support skills, versus a BLS or a basic life support call would be more of just vital signs and transportation and delivery to the hospital. So, yeah.
Right. And I know lots of times you do that, too. People get headaches and whatever, I mean, they end up getting picked up and carried to the hospital. But 2,250 through June, advanced life support. I know the police department saves lives every day, but I don't think we give our fire department credit for the lives that they're saving every day also, aside from responding to fires. And of course, that involves protecting property and lives also, but it's not as important as ALS is, you know, when the time comes. So I just wanted to throw that in there. Thank you very much. Just add my support to everybody else's and keep up the good work. You've got some good stuff coming.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay.[1501.41][1501.41](APPLAUSE). Okay, with that, we're going to move to motions. We have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, August 17, 2022, at 4:00 PM unless canceled. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson.
So moved.
Good motion from Councilman Johnson for approval. Do we have a volunteer for a second? Vice Mayor Bennett.
Second.
Second, Vice Mayor Bennett, any discussion in the motion? Here or none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Our next item is non-agenda speakers. Before we start our non-agenda speakers and follow up our announcements and comments along with our media presentation, we are going to take a 10-minute recess so everybody can stretch their legs, get a drink of water, hit the potty, whatever it is that you want to do, and we will be back at 8:25. to do, and we will be back at 8:25. Give me, where are you going, Vice Mayor? Okay, council is now back in session. Madam Clerk, I know this is a rhetorical question. Do we have any non-agenda speakers this evening?
Yes, Mayor Duman. We have 14 non-agenda speakers this evening.
All right. If so, would you please explain the guidelines?
Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks services, remarks to services policies and affairs of city government. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. I can start? Okay, great. And each speaker will receive five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Carl Lewison, 9248 Virginia Avenue, representing self regarding Amtrak. Carl Lewison? Robert Tu, 219 East Constance Road, representing self regarding issues on East Constance Road.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Manager, and Vice Mayor. My name is Robert Drill Tu. I live at 219 East Constance Road. And I'm very admired about all these improvements the city of Suffolk wants to move forward with, but I've been a resident of this city for a long time. And Mr. Duman and Councilman Goldberg have helped me out in different situations, and I appreciate that. But my concern is, with all the events taking place in this city over the summertime and into the fall, there's no sidewalk for pedestrians to walk on East Constance Road. From where the little mini park is, going north to the library, I mean, to Planet Fitness, or the park, or the farmer's market, or the Hilton, which job fairs occur, people are pushing the kids in the streets, and there's nowhere for them to walk. And my concern is to Mayor Duman and the Suffolk Borough, Mr. Goldberg, if you would try to address this issue and see if that you can get a sidewalk put in this area to help not only the Kingborough residents, but also the citizens of Suffolk. And I say in closing, on the left-hand side going north, there is a place where people can walk, but with the overgrowth, that has grown so bad, and the city has addressed this situation. But if they would do that in a proper manner, in a timely manner, it would help this situation where they would have a place to walk until this can be resolved. And I don't mean to take up the more of y'all's time, but I wish this could be done to protect the citizens of Suffolk so they have a place to walk when they use that sector of highway. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Tyronda Robinson, 1741 Sawmill Point Road, representing self regarding community issues. Tyronda Robinson. Our next speaker is Delegate Clinton Jenkins, 438 North Main Street, representing self regarding constituent issues.
Members of Suffolk City Council, good evening again. Delegate Clinton Jenkins, representing the city of Suffolk and a small part of Chesapeake. Here this evening because of calls from my constituents and the city, living in the city of Suffolk. I'm excited again about growth opportunities in the city of Suffolk and the work that you're doing. But I've received calls regarding the Port 460 project. And persons are, again, concerned about transparency. Regardless of how we define transparency, we owe that to our citizens so that they're clear and know what they're getting. They're concerned about transparency. They're concerned about traffic. They're concerned about safety. And we want to make sure that they have all the facts, know what they're getting into and what's coming into the city. They also asked that, if possible, it wasn't too late, that the city could consider a different location for the Port 460 project. Again, I want to thank you all for allowing me to come and present on behalf of the constituents of Suffolk and please assist them with their concerns and their requests for information. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike. Our next speaker is Mike Host, 115 Pitchkettle Circle, representing self regarding Port 460 proposal.
Hi, it's Pitchkettle Point Circle. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. And yes, I want to speak about the Port 460 project. Just a little bit of context about me, in case you missed it when I was on the way up, I'm a really old guy. I retired after a 49-year career that entailed some pretty substantial time spent in engineering, environmental management, safety management. In the last 13 years, I was a safety management consultant to a bunch of really large military installations with the Navy and the Marine Corps. So with that background, it was kind of natural for me, when I first started hearing about the Port 460 project and the rezoning that would be needed in order to support that, to wonder what is the impact of this project going to be on the safety of the roads that serve it and surround it? So my first impulse, which I acted on, was to go get the staff report that was given to the planning commission for their vote, and also the traffic impact assessment that was included or referenced in that package. And my purpose was to review those and find the traffic safety assessment that I was interested in. But there was none in either document. As a matter of fact, the only mention of safety that I could find in either document was a brief discussion of how signs could be used to help control big truck traffic on Pitchkettle Road. So I had to look elsewhere, and I kind of just started hunting it up, trying to find any information that I could find. I found an interesting document. It was VDOT's 2005 report concerning the conditions surrounding the proposal to widen Route 460 at that time. And there was a lot of pages and a lot of data, but there were only a few bits of data that I found really interesting and maybe relevant to the Port 460 idea. So to summarize them, 460 is busy. The amount of truck traffic already on 460 in 2005 was about two to three times the national average. Drivers who ride on 460 at that time were twice as likely to have an accident as on similar roads in Virginia, and two and a half times as likely to be killed in an accident on 460 as on similar roads in Virginia. So what I get from all of that, for me, in the simplest possible terms, is when you add a bunch of, when you add a bunch of big trucks to an already congested road, you're going to have more accidents, you're going to have more fatalities. A second thing is, the Port 460 project is going to bring a great big bunch of trucks to that road and to Route 58 as well. And the third thing is, I just don't want that to happen. So that's why I'm here tonight. You could say that's really old data, doesn't relate to what's going on today, 2005. However, I will say, what's going on now is so much worse. About 50% more traffic. You would think an equivalent rise in the percentage of trucks on the road. And actually, when you factor in the additional trucks that the Port 460 project would add to the roads, that would drive that number up to 300% higher than what DEQ, than what VDOT was looking at in 2005. So even today, though, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has said, there is no road in Virginia that has more fatalities than 460 or 58. None. No matter how long, no matter how short, no matter how big, no matter how small. I understand the world needs warehouses, and I understand that the property owner in this case has a right to sell his property. I am just saying that, in my opinion, it's not the right use for that property, and it's not the right location for that use. And so I urge you, when this comes up to a vote in a couple of weeks, please vote no. Not for this use, not for this location. Your comprehensive plan that's in place right now says that should be a suburban use district. I think they got it right. I hope that you will deny the rezoning, help the property owner, get that property sold for a good price for a use that's consistent with the suburban use, and also that you will help the developer find a better location for that warehouse, one that does not involve so many hazards for the innocent bystanders. And I thank you for your time.
Chris Dove, 852 Cronall Me Drive, representing self regarding the Route 460 warehouse rezoning.
Good evening, council. A wise man said just recently that with the port increase, we're going to have increased truck traffic. And that truck traffic is going to go through 64 up towards Richmond, and it's going to go out 58 out towards Peterburg, and some of it's going to go up 460. Those trucks are going to go through Suffolk, but none of them are going to stop in Suffolk unless we go ahead and build this warehouse facility. Right now, the average truck traffic on 460 is approximately 3,000 trucks a day. Those trucks just go through 460, get onto 58, and go wherever they're going, either towards the port or go back the other way. They don't stop. So we've got about one or two minutes of dealing with the truck when it's in that section of either 460 or 58. If we build a warehouse, now those trucks are going to stop, and they're going to go If we build a warehouse, now those trucks are going to stop and they're going to go left-hand turns and right-hand turns, and they're going to accelerate real quick like a truck does and take several minutes to get through an intersection as opposed to a car. Now you're going to have, the traffic study said approximately 9,000 truck traffic vehicles a day, added to the already existing 3,000 on a road that's only going to hopefully be six lanes, but right now it's only four. So we've got that issue. And then the second issue is that the, I noticed in the traffic impact analysis said that Suffolk Traffic Engineer expressed significant concerns over the use of Pitchkettle Road, particularly by trucks to access this proposed development. The pavement sections, the concerns, the typical cross-sections, the narrow lanes, the lack of shoulders on either side of the highway, open ditches along both sides. It doesn't mention that King's Fork is the exact same, except for King's Fork is not as straight as Pitchkettle. So now, but they have a widening of Pitchkettle from the exits out the back of the development up to King's Fork. There's no widening of King's Fork mentioned, just the section so that trucks can exit and get up to King's Fork. So we have a bunch of trucks that are going to either have to go through King's Fork, it's not designed for trucks, or they're going to go down south, or they're going to go west, or whatever direction, east, to get over to 58 down Pitchkettle Road, which is also not designed for trucks. And the plan right now is to go ahead and put signage so that the trucks don't go that way. This council has the authority to make the condition, on the conditional rezoning, to make it so that trucks cannot enter or the engineer, the exits of the development, so that trucks cannot turn left or right or turn into the back of the section. Only private vehicles, personal vehicles, and emergency vehicles can exit. A truck is a long vehicle and it just can't take a sharp turn. Engineer those exits so a truck can't get in and out. That way you solve the problem with Pitchkettle Road and King's Fork Road. All those trucks will have to go out the front and then you'll have to deal with the fact that you've got another 12,000 trucks, or 12,000 trucks traveling on a six-lane highway going to and from the port.
The next speaker is Kelly Hangler, 9345 Eclipse Drive, representing Self regarding the Port 460 proposal.
Hello, Mayor. Councilmember Shirley Butler-Barlow, hello, and all members. Thank you so much. John Quincy Adams said gratitude has an intensity to it, in short, that fills the soul to overflowing and scarce leaves room for any other sentiment or thought. Why do I bring that up to you here about Port 460 is because we have just come through, obviously, a pandemic. It is our first summer. We are here again tonight, many concerned citizens for the City of Suffolk, because we do understand the 60,000-foot look at Hampton Roads. We do love Hampton Roads and Tidewater as much as we love Suffolk and the backroads and the farms and the fresh food and our schools and our children and our churches and our neighbors and our friends and all the new people who are joining us. And so it is hard. It is a very hard move to have to come again and again before council for forces that are coming at us from the region, for forces that are coming at us from the state. We have a landfill, I mentioned that before, that's 830 acres that has been designated for the region, there's no other place for it. Yes, I know that fact, okay? There's an overpass going to it to better serve the public. I know that fact. We also have designated all of the reservoirs of Nansman River, all the fresh water to it was dammed up long before most of us in here, I would say, right? And it is the regional water. That is an actual regional plan. And so when we speak to our local representatives and we're trying to think clear-minded from a heart that is tired of aching, tired of aching, had another death this weekend, but I'm up here, okay? I work in healthcare, but I'm up here, I'm a policy analyst, but I'm up here, I'm a veteran, but I'm up here again, not to bore you, but because I love this city and I'm telling you from a policy analyst standpoint, that it is not a done deal, okay? That is no one's fault, we have to come up with what we can accept and we cannot accept, and it doesn't all have to be right now. We have building all up and down Carolina Road, okay? We have four manufacturing sites in every borough except Sleepy Hole, not wishing it on you, okay? Out Crennan Eclipse, out Chuck Tuck Borough, we have all the industrial sand mines, so we have our share of truck traffic, okay? We all bear together so that we can grow and have been growing for hundreds of years and have a welcome place, but if somebody came in to my front door, they would not have to say anything to me, I would open the door and let them in, but if they slammed their body against my front door, I'm going to stop to see, are you having a moment? Are you running from something? Because this is where my heart stays. I don't automatically go to controversy and fear and upset, and I'm tired of being in that place because someone has once again decided from a regional level that we're going to come into a suburban district this time after having put everybody reading all the comprehensive plans and in rah rah, I can't tell you how many cards I passed out about the survey. We want to be part of and we cannot if we do have a region, and I understand it's coming from the region, okay? And bless you, region, but you have to come to our front door where here we make home for everyone. And we can't just slam onto 460 onto a ramp because we have a public-private enterprise, a public-private participation program that was created by the General Assembly in 1995 where we're going to share the cost of all of this big upheaval. We have the upheaval, it's in Holland right now in 58. We have the upheaval, it was called a pandemic, okay? We have the upheaval, it's all the care of everything else in the city that's been going on with all of the wonderful warehousing and infrastructure and manufacturing and everything that we have here. So I say to you in my last 46 seconds, me and John Adams, okay, to please consider, how much do you get to before people fracture? How much and how important is it because, oh my goodness, there's an investor ring up there who's circling around and they must have that piece of land? Yeah, sure, they should have the piece of land, it's a very nice piece of land, thank you. And Mr. Williams should have, as Mr. Hosted says, an opportunity to build something wonderful on it as a commercial or residential supplement to the area, not as an industrial site. We need to add to this place that we love and the hearts where we stand before you.
Next speaker is Chet Hart, 4004 Reed's Ferry Road, representing Self regarding traffic congestion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, other council members, City Manager and other city officials. Like she said, my name is Chet Hart, I live at 404 Reed's Ferry Road. Most of you know me as a former Vice President, Chief Operating Officer at EBSI Hospital, and more recently as a retired, thankfully retired, Executive Director of Western Tidewater Free Clinic. This is the first time I've ever come to City Council to share any concerns, I normally do that in a private setting, but I felt compelled to come and speak with you a little bit tonight. Currently Suffolk has a major traffic problem. If you travel our roads day in and day out, you run into problems on Bridge Road, it's always under construction. It ends at a two-lane road, Godwin Bridge, and God forbid, on a weekly basis, several times a week, the M&amp;M has a hiccup and traffic comes to a gridlock. If you look at Nansman Parkway to Willroy Road, it's a potential death trap, it's been that way for years. I used to live in Driver, I used to travel that road to work to and from every day. I've almost had head-on collisions by people trying to go around the traffic. It's a bad situation. I know it's on the books, but nothing's being done. You look at Route 58 from the Route 13 bypass out to Johnson Gardens, Tim knows this well, it's a nightmare, it has been for years. We're making progress, but the current improvements that are being done should have been done a long time ago. All I say is please give these existing projects the utmost priority and don't jump into another project like the one that's being proposed regarding the Port 460 Logistics Center. I wanted to do a little fact-finding on this project, so I got a copy of the TIA, it was prepared by Kimberly Horn, they're experts in the field, used them many a time when I was working with the hospital. Here's some of the facts from the TIA report that didn't seem to be shared in the Planning Commission staff report. Page nine says, quote unquote, "There are timing, scheduling, and funding constraints associated with the design, the right-of-way acquisitions, and the construction of Pruden Boulevard as it's proposed for a six-lane highway with a 30-foot median, as well as the Route 58-460 Diamond Exchange." There are major issues that need to be looked into in this study. On page 34, it talks about the 9,000 daily trips that are going to be from the M2 warehouses. That's 9,000 daily trips, it's actually 8,944 to be exact. And then right below that, on the same page, it says there's an additional 12,948 trips per day from the B2 development. You add those together, you have 20,948 daily trips. Those are new daily trips. That's well over and above, almost double, the VDOT analysis that was provided from old data, 2019. VDOT said there were 25,000 daily trips a day. So we go from 25,000, we're going to pour another, almost 2,100 trips per day in there. Well, where are they going to go? If you look at that, on the next page of the TIA, it says 10% of those trips, 10% of the 20,000 trips are going to be headed downtown. That's another 1,000 to 2,000 trips a day that we're going to cram down Main Street? I don't think so. It says there's another 10% that's going to go down Route 13. So that's great, we have the Route 13 bypass and you get down there and all of a sudden you're becoming a two-lane road and you've got to go through Huaylville. You think Huaylville can take 2,000 more tractor-trailer trucks? I think not. Anyhow, so I looked at the 2021 to 2030 CIP for Transportation for this city, the 10-year budget, it's $135 million. So what do you think the cost of the roadway is that's going to be built? Well, there was no mention of the cost of this project. I think when you add up all the improvements along 460, King's Fork, Pitchkettle Road, and Pitchkettle Road's woefully short because they cut it off at the bridge, that's a heck of a lot, that's many times greater than the current projects that we have going on like at Route 58. And I think that project's about $100 million. So I'm guessing somewhere, somebody needs to do a cost analysis, but it's probably $300 million, $400 million? Where is that going to come from? We haven't looked at what VDOT is going to do, are they going to participate in this? Are we going to put all of that on the backs of the citizens of Suffolk? I don't know, I just say, it's a far-fetched. So, I mean, I've got a whole page of questions, I'd be glad to leave them here for you, look at them, but I'm for controlled growth in this city. We've got to grow. Every city out here in the United States wants to grow, but we want to do it well, we want to do it within our comprehensive plans, we want to make sure that we've done our due diligence, we want to make sure, as the mayor said, we have full transparency. And I'm sorry, but this project feels like a shotgun wedding. I didn't have a shotgun wedding, I dated my wife for five years and we had a year of engagement. So I'm asking you all, kind of slow this thing down, let's look at it, let's make sure we do our due diligence, study it thoroughly, be transparent with the citizens, and I trust that you will. And I thank you for all the time you spend in these chambers every month and all the hard work that you do for the great City of Suffolk, but let's keep it a great City of Suffolk. I see the peanut emblem up there, I'd like to keep that, I don't want to replace it with a tractor-trailer truck. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Sandy Hart, 4004 Reed's Ferry Road, representing Self regarding recreational opportunities on the Nansman River.
Yes, I am the better half. Good evening, Mayor Doeman and members of City Council. My name is Sandy Hart at 404 Reed's Ferry Road. After moving around a bit, my family settled in Suffolk in 1988. Yes, I am a comer, but we consider Suffolk our home. We like the size of Suffolk, the sense of community, the ease of getting around, the natural beauty of the river lakes and countryside. I am not opposed to growth, but want controlled growth that assures Suffolk can be described and thought of like some of these communities, which like Suffolk, are river towns or waterfront towns. These towns have become destinations for visitors and popular for permanent residents. Oriental North Carolina. Oriental sits along the beautiful Noose River. Wide waters beckon year-round sailing, cruising, kayaking, canoeing, and fishing. Off-water activities include walking tours, cycling, tennis, museums, art galleries. Sit back in Oriental and relax in one of our many parks and enjoy small-town riverside living. Edenton, North Carolina. Described as the prettiest small town in the South, where visitors and residents enjoy the bay and river cruises, fishing, paddling, and bird watching, as well as relaxing rural drives through pastoral farms. Smithville, Virginia. Smithville offers residents a small-town atmosphere, a good school system, affordable housing, historic downtown, walking tours, boating, fishing, kayaking, and beautiful parks. Swampscott, Massachusetts. A small town that is attracting full-time residents with a careful fiscal hand, a small tax increase, and smart investments in schools and upcoming harbor and waterfront projects. Gulf Shores, Alabama. A beach town that is Alabama's fastest-growing city, but they are mindful of keeping the quality of life high. There's a focus on developing housing and amenities in a way to keep the beach impact under control while improving beach access. Suffolk is a river city. However, the Nansman River has no public boat access, the closest being on Bennett's Creek. The city has potential sites for access and waterfront businesses like Brady's Marina, the Old Navy Site, Constance Wharf, Lone Star Lakes, and Planner's Club. This could enhance and make our river more accessible to our cities, more enticing to visitors, and more attractive to new residents and businesses. Let's capitalize on this. Let's put our planning and our money into these possibilities that will better our town and its reputation. More dangerous traffic, warehouses, expensive road projects will not do this. In closing, I thank you all for the tireless work you do for our city. It is long hours after a long day of your own jobs. It is meetings, research, and more meetings. Most nights, we here in Suffolk put our heads on our pillows knowing that you, our elected officials, have our best interest in mind as you make decisions for Suffolk. Remember, it's your constituents that have trusted you to listen to them.
Our next speaker is Mary Ann Persons, 1247 Murphys Mill Road, representing Self regarding Port 460.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council members, city staff, good evening. I want to thank you for allowing this time for us to speak. I know many of you have been getting phone calls and emails, and I appreciate the time you're taking with your constituents so they do feel heard. My name is Mary Ann Persons and I live at 1247 Murphys Mill Road, and I am here to speak about Road, and I am here to speak about the proposed rezoning for the Port 460 warehouse complex. Until recently, warehousing has been a real-hot, real estate commodity. Suffolk has positioned itself to take advantage of increased need for storage space, with at least 13 warehousing and commercial complexes and more being built. There are complexes along Route 58 heading west, by Carolina Road heading south, near Route 17 to the north of us. Amazon has constructed several sites, and it seems logical to jump on the bandwagon, especially with a port system encouraging more growth. My husband and I are regular readers of the Wall Street Journal, so allow me to share with you some of the quotes or some of the titles from recent articles. May 23, 2022. "Amazon Plans to Sublet Warehouse Space to Reduce Excess Capacity." The company has acknowledged it overbuilt. May 31, 2022. "Amazon Slowdown Sends Shivers Through Red-Hot Warehouse Sector." June 13, 2022. "Warehousing Giants Are Consolidating in a Shift in Red-Hot Real Estate Market." Industry observers say red-hot industrial property demand is cooling. June 30, 2022. "Cooling Consumer Spending Points to Further Economic Slowdown." Why, I wonder, is Suffolk considering the building of over 5 million square feet of warehousing, the equivalent of 27 Walmart supercenters, in a gateway area when the economy is slowing? Why pave over a scenic gateway land in the hopes that you are prepared for an economic turnaround that may never come? Consumer debt rose by $1 trillion last year alone and is the highest it's been since 2007. Shipping containers of goods are being abandoned on the docks, sometimes sold at a fraction of the price to any discounter who will take them. Just as COVID brought a new way of living and working, this recession will bring a new way of spending. It's easy to be enticed by the lure of jobs and promised tax revenue. I'm looking forward to tomorrow's community meeting to learn more about these numbers. If 3.8 million, I'm sorry, if 3.8 million square feet of Amazon space employs up to 1,200 people, where does the 9,000 employee number come from for that and companies? If Amazon, which is known for better benefits, is advertising its distribution center jobs at $29,000 to $39,000 a year, what will the average salary be for the Port 460 employees? It certainly doesn't sound like enough to support a family. We want jobs that don't just help people get by. We want them to get ahead. The economy is slowing. I encourage the City Council to slow down as well. Think about the potential for empty warehouses, the stacked, empty shipping containers, the employees who've lost their jobs to animation, automation. Then think about a gateway to our central downtown area, which we are trying to revitalize. What is the best use for this property? Do we need more warehouses at this time? Or do we develop the land as a complement to downtown, spaces that you have approved this evening, the library, the festival park? That land and the Williams farm land can act as bookends, spurring growth all the way from Kings Fork down to West Washington and the new facilities that you are building. Allow Central Suffolk to have a focus on education, small business, and living, as talked about in the library's staff analysis. There's a lot to think about. And in the meantime, I encourage you to deny the rezoning. Build a better future for Central Suffolk. Thank you for all that you do.
Our next speaker is Denise Murden, 4441 Kingston Parkway, representing self regarding the Port 460 rezoning.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. My name is Denise Murden, 4041 Kingston Parkway. Usually, I write my important speeches down, and because of my career, I've made a lot of speeches in my life. But this one seems like it's the most important one I've ever made, and I have been thinking about what I'm going to say to you for weeks. I spoke at the Planning Commission meeting, and I have literally been giving all of my free time and more to this issue ever since I went to that public meeting on June 1. I, I haven't even lived in this city for five years, and I love this city. I've lived here two years under COVID, so I haven't even had a chance to really get out and meet as many people as I would like to. But I love this city. My husband and I chose it to retire in. We built a modest little home in the condo community of Kings Fork Farm. We, we knew there would be growth. We accept growth. We, we know that Suffolk needs it. It's, that's not the issue. It's the issue of what you want to put there on that property. And it really, really has personal meaning to me because I come from the Lehigh Valley of Pennsylvania. And the Lehigh Valley of Pennsylvania is now considered the warehouse capital of the East. Suffolk has, is building or has under construction more than 7 million square feet of warehouse space. This project, this Port 460 project, would be even bigger than the Amazon project at 5 million feet, at square feet. So if you add up everything that's already here, already under construction, and this Port 460 project that's being proposed, that would mean we would have covered our city with a third of what already exists in the entire Lehigh Valley, which is not just one city. And I can tell you how devastated those of us who come from there and who still live there are by what has happened there. And in addition to some of the things that Ms. Persons just said, I can tell you that I, that I've been told that a lot of those warehouses are sitting there now as a tax write-off. I talked to both my cousin and a friend of mine from high school recently, and they were describing to me, you go down, you go down Bath Pike to Easton to there, to everywhere is covered with warehouses, and they can't go anywhere anymore or enjoy the lifestyle they once had. It was an agricultural community. My roots there were very, very deep there, back to the 1700s. And now I'm seeing that land taken away. The people here of Suffolk feel the same way. It's amazing that we have been able, in less than three weeks, to gather more than 700 people on a Facebook, private Facebook page, people, 1,000 people signing a petition. We got more information out there than this city did about this project, and we don't have an attorney. We don't have any money. We just crowdsourced it. And, and we care enough about our city to just tell you that we, we can't go down this road. I know the trucks are coming, Mr. Doeman. I watched your, I watched your Facebook livestream. I know the trucks are coming, but they don't have to stop here. This, this is just, this is just so wrong for our city. And our, and the, and those of us who have been discussing this, this issue have said, what we want is growth by choice, not chance. This seems to be the first deal that came along, but you can't accept it. It's not good for the citizens of Suffolk, and it's not good for the region. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa Jones, 5032 Kings Grant Circle, representing self regarding the Port 460 Logistics Center.
Thanks, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the members of the City Council. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Lisa Jones, and I live at 5032 Kings Grant Circle in Suffolk, Virginia. I'm a relatively new homeowner in Suffolk, Virginia. I moved here in August of 2020 from the Washington DC, Maryland, Northern Virginia metro area, when I purchased a home in Kings Fork Farm. I hadn't seen the home. I knew no one here. I had no family or friends in this area, but I loved Suffolk's small-town atmosphere, the sense of community, the pride in homeownership, and its proximity to metro attractions in Hampton, Norfolk, and Virginia Beach without actually living in a metro area. I actually agreed with those signs that you have on Godwin that declare Suffolk, Virginia as one of the top 100 communities in the United States to live in, and I thought it would be perfect to live here. So just a little bit about me. I am a Brooklynite from New York City, so small towns definitely intrigue me. I definitely didn't grow up in one. But in 2007, I moved to a rural, quaint, quiet area in Washington DC, Northern Virginia, Maryland, that was surrounded by farms and forested land. And unfortunately, that farmland was cleared out by 2011. They razed the whole area and replaced it with several large commercial businesses. I personally hated the transient population that came with non-residential populations, plus the increased cost of living, higher crime rates, and the resulting increased police presence to control these issues. I also noted that there were significant increases in my renters insurance and my auto insurance that were a direct result from the increases in fatal and serious car accidents that were the direct result of the increased traffic from those commercial areas. As a commuter, I was frustrated by the long commute times that was worsened because the town really only had two main roads to lead to the highways that were only 13 miles away. All of this fast growth in homes, apartments, businesses, fast food, schools, stores, and emergency services had resulted in so many people and cars that the Egress roads in and out of that small area were overwhelmed daily and created more hazards that the residents had to deal with. Inclement weather, flooding, constant road patching, and car accidents, they only added to the problem. So as a result of these experiences, I believe the addition of Port 460 Logistics Center will create some of these similar problems right here in Suffolk, Virginia, by making this area within the boundaries of Kings Fork Road, Godwin, Pruden, and Pitch Kettle extremely congested by the addition of constant commercial vehicles. Pruden and Godwin are the two main roads for all of the residents and businesses on Kings Fork Road and the streets that intersect with Kings Fork Road. I don't believe that the full impact of adding Port 460 has been measured logistically with all of the new residents and business construction that already exists or is underway, and the drivers that will always look for alternate routes to get around slow-moving, congested traffic and commercial areas quickly. Logistically, Kings Fork Road runs between Pruden and Godwin, so it's important to remember that that intersection at the opposite end of Kings Fork Road at Godwin will soon handle the competing traffic from Kings Fork High School and Middle School, Suffolk Fire and Rescue Station Number Six, and Publix, plus all of the residents who live in the Kings Fork, Saddle Brook, and Link Prince communities, as well as the private properties that are up and down Kings Fork Road. Now, in my opinion, adding Port 460 is going to negatively impact the residents of Suffolk by adding to the emergency and school vehicle traffic patterns, increasing our auto insurance rates, decreasing our property values, potentially slowing down emergency response, and increasing the number of transients in our community. Adding Port 460 will make Suffolk, Virginia another metro area with all of their problems. And those are really not the changes that are closely aligned with life in Suffolk. Purg your sign. Thank you so much for your time.
The next speaker is Jacqueline Brooks, 1305 Manning Road, representing self regarding
Good evening, City Council and members. I appreciate you being here. I appreciate you listening to what each of the speakers is saying and paying attention. It's, it's very kind of you. My husband and I moved out here in 2010. We moved into Picosen in 1997 when the Navy brought us to this area. I was not excited to move to Virginia, being a California, Ohio, Michigan girl, but I've loved it. Picosen was great, semi-rural, perfect place to raise the kids. Boys graduate, get married, have families. We decided that it was nice to move to Suffolk, in a rural community, in an agricultural rural community. My family members in Ohio were all in agriculture. I can't imagine Suffolk not honoring its agricultural roots. I would also like to point out that 58 and 460 are currently evacuation routes. Should there be a hurricane or, with all the trains that are going through, we might have to evacuate due to a train. How are you going to evacuate people from this area? What if something happens at the warehouses? Another person has very, who was a former trucker, has raised the issue that your truck stops, and warehouses tend to have prostitution, drug abuse, and alcohol abuse. Do we need that coming to Suffolk? I don't think so. I would also ask, what money is going to help Suffolk take care of roads that they are already not taking care of? I live on Manning Road, which is off of 58. I'm about 2 and 1/2 miles off of that. It's There's been a railroad that had crossing that has been no longer in use. It's not nicely paved over like Manning Bridge or some of the other roads. Why not? If you don't have the money to support your roads now, what is going to suddenly bring money in? Suffolk needs to build affordable housing. That's not 300,000, 500,000, 600,000, 800,000-dollar houses. We need houses that people can afford. The sad truth is, when we're raising our children, we can't afford the houses we would like to have, and when we get older, we can. I would also like to point out that another condition that I think should be made conditional is that if, I don't know how you pronounce the name, Matan? If, for some reason, they go bankrupt, this rezoning permit has to be started over by whatever entity or whoever buys that property, so that they do not have, they're not able to come in and build whatever they want without any restriction if you're going to go ahead and force us to have this. Another point I would like to make is that if ports of Virginia want this so bad, if Norfolk and Portsmouth want it so bad, put it in their towns. Put it by the ports. We are already having what a friend of mine fondly refers to as road gators, torn-up tires from semis from Bowers Hill down 58. What are you going to do about that? Who is paying for the road maintenance that is not being done? You talk about wanting to attract tourists to come here? What's attractive about a paved-over city? We could better use that area to have a cinematic complex, to have Virginia Tech, or UVA, or whoever comes. come in and have an agricultural education site where our residents who live in city where they don't have backyards to put in their gardens could be shown, or maybe they don't know how to garden, and they could be growing their own fruits and vegetables. Have hiking trails, protect our wildlife, which I deeply adore, being able to watch and take pictures of.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time has expired.
Oops, sorry.
Just a little over a second, I'll give you some more.
No, no, it's okay. The only other thing I wanted to say is the employment numbers that they are projecting, I think are severely overly optimistic.
Okay, thank you.
And I thank you again for your time and for your energy.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next speaker is Billie Jean Ferguson, a property owner on Joshua Lane in Suffolk, representing self regarding the rezoning for Port 460.
Good evening, Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Billie Jean Ferguson, property owner, Joshua Lane. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed rezoning request for Port 460 for several reasons. One, how this request has been and is being handled by the city of Suffolk, the lack of communication to the residents of Suffolk, and the lack of consideration to how this will negatively impact traffic safety, nearby property values, and overall well-being and character of the city and its residents. First, I'd like to share some of my background. My family has been a part of the Suffolk community for more than four generations and still owns and manages a farm on Joshua Lane within two miles of the property in question. While I've not lived in Suffolk for 20 years, I had planned to return to the farm with my family within the next one to two years, once my husband retires from the Army. Those plans included sending our two daughters to NSA where I attended K-12. While military life is challenging and demanding for our family, we have had the opportunity and privilege of living in many cities across the US, experiencing different parts of American culture, scenery, and quality of life. We have lived in or near residential suburban, rural, commercial, and industrial areas and had many conversations along the way about what we wanted for our family once military life was over. Our experiences living near industrial areas have allowed us to witness firsthand what these types of jobs, traffic, and character do to a city and local businesses, and it's not pretty. You can imagine my disappointment upon returning to the Tidewater area in 2020 after a decade of trying to get back to this area, to see that this part of Suffolk has become warehouse central. What was once beautiful farmland has turned into a parking lot in an eyesore. Who wants to live in a place like this? For those who have the means to live elsewhere, they certainly will, or those the people you want to drive out of Suffolk. As we weigh whether or not to move back to Suffolk, your decision will influence if we do so and if we will take our business to Windsor Franklin or Smithfield, places where we don't have to battle traffic for 30 minutes to go less than 10 miles, and frankly feel safer doing so. Furthermore, based on the exchanges during the planning commission meeting on July 19th, it is very clear the residents' concerns are not being adequately heard or addressed. How will we handle 9,000 or up to 20,000, as some reports suggest, additional vehicles per day? How is that not going to endanger anyone who drives in either direction of 460, most notably the inexperienced drivers going to or from NSA, which one day may be my children? The traffic will back up, the trucks will have difficulty turning left off of 460 even with a stoplight. The trucks will use Pitch Kettle Road and other backroads not designated or not designed for the amount or weight of these trucks, no matter what any sign says. These roads have multiple curves and blind spots, which will result in accidents between tractor-trailers and cars, which will result in injuries and likely deaths. How long will we have to contend with construction vehicles for what appears to be a very lengthy, multi-phase project? Is there any consideration to having a more direct entry point off 58 bypass that is only for tractor-trailer traffic into the facility? If not, why not? If so, why has there not been any mention of this in the study? Too many questions and not enough answers. This proposal will not compensate for the decades of poor planning around desperately needed infrastructure improvements. I grew up and spent the first 18 years of my life driving or being driven up and down 460. I can cite the studies saying how much more dangerous the stretch of road is compared to similar roads, as we've already heard tonight in the country, but my point is, this has been a known problem for decades. Why hasn't the city done anything about it? How many people and children have to die or become seriously injured before you stop and think if this is a good thing for our city? In my opinion, it's irresponsible to count on a developer to fix our roads as part of a deal instead of directly funding these roads. If I'm not mistaken, the plan cites only $6 million from the developers towards engineering plans and improvements, only $2 million of which would go directly to improvements of the interchange. That will not even come close to covering the costs associated with the required road improvements, and with no assurances, who foots the bill? The taxpayers? So what should be done with this property? The 2035 Comprehensive Plan has this land zone for suburban use, which was adopted seven years ago by a council consisting of many of the same members whom I stand in front of today. What has changed between then and now? Numerous alternatives that have already been proposed by the community better align with the city's character, history, heritage, and needs. I understand that something will eventually be built on this land, but all I hear is loud and clear opposition to yet more warehouses. To be frank, I personally don't want to see hundreds of homes or apartments stacked on top of one another like in other parts of Suffolk either. If we work together, I'm confident we can come up with something that better serves the community and promotes growth. Suffolk has a division of tourism, and I'm curious what will be left for that group to oversee in a few years. To quote the www dot Suffolk, visit SuffolkVA.com website, if you love small-town charm, eco-adventure, performing and visual arts, history festivals, boutiques, chef-owned restaurants, recreation, golf, guided tours, and peanuts, you'll love Suffolk, Virginia. That doesn't sound like the Suffolk I see evolving, which is a shame. He wants to visit a city whose roads are clogged with semis and whose land is covered in warehouses. We are not just individuals speaking only on our own behalf. We are community uniting to oppose a decision that could devastate the livelihoods and quality of life for many who live, work, and visit in this part of Suffolk. This rezoning is not the kind of growth we need or want, we need a better plan. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor Dooman. The first addition to this evening's agenda, the following motion to nominate and appoint the respective individuals to the following boards and commissions, the Agricultural Committee, interim planning and community development director Kevin Wine, and to the South Side Area Network, information technology director Charles Kirakou.
A motion is in order, with the pleasure of Council, Councilman Goldberg.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval, Councilman Goldberg, Councilman Ward.
Second.
Second from Councilman Ward. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. And, Madam Clerk, I did get notice that Councilman Fawcett is no longer online, so I don't know if you prefer we go to electronic voting, or would you prefer to do roll call?
I can do roll call, no problem.
Roll call for us tonight? Okay, thank you, call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of six to zero. The second item for council under new business this evening would be a motion to remove Thomas Van Dever as the Direct Marketing Farm Representative and Monte Walden Senior as the Farm Services Area Local Administrative Area Holy Neck Representative on the Suffolk Agricultural Committee in accordance with City Code Section 2-161.
Councilman Johnson.
So move.
Got a motion for approval, Councilman Johnson, do I have a second? Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Second.
Got a second from Councilperson Butler Barlow, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of six to zero.
Are there any new business items that require the action of City Council for consideration? Councilperson Butler Barlow? Just hit the button by mistake. Okay. Didn't turn it on. You had to turn yourself off. No. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to announcements and comments. At this time, we'll ask Interim Media and Community Relations Director Jennifer Moore if she has any announcements.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. The city of Suffolk has learned last week that all three rating agencies, Fitch Ratings, Moody's Investor Service, and S&amp;P Global, have affirmed the city's AAA rating with a stable outlook. The city achieved a AAA rating from all three rating agencies for the first time in the fall of 2019. The AAA rating represents the creditworthiness of the city of Suffolk government-issued bonds. It also provides assurance that the city of Suffolk has the highest quality of bonds and the least amount of risk, and that both principal and interest on the bonds will be paid on time and in full. The Fire and Rescue Training Division in partnership with Suffolk's Risk Management and Safety Office has developed a unique hands-on training program that not only improves employees' driving skills, but also their confidence as a driver. This driver training course is called the Confidence Course and is implemented at the Suffolk Airport. Employees who drive the city's largest vehicles, such as Fire and Rescue's ladder truck, can now improve their skills using this course. With over 1,000 city vehicles on the road, driving thousands of miles each year, this course acts to reduce accidents and injuries, making the road safer for everyone. The Association for Government Risk Pools recognized this program as a benchmark for all cities and counties in the state of Virginia. The city of Suffolk's Human Resource Department and Mission Square Retirement teamed up to host an ice cream social employee appreciation event last week. The Ben &amp; Jerry's Ice Cream Truck visited 12 city office locations to serve up delicious treats to beat the summer heat. The Public Works Department is pleased to report that the Route 58 widening project is quickly approaching a significant milestone in the project. As the project enters Phase Two, let's check out the short video on the progress.
The Route 58 widening project is well underway, and we're about to enter Phase Two of the project. This is a significant milestone in the project and requires lane changes and a speed reduction. The speed limit reduction from 45 to 35 mile an hour will be in effect for the 3-mile work zone for the duration of the project. The speed limit reduction is to improve safety for the traveling public and their contractors' work crews. Please slow down and use caution driving through the work zone. Temporary lanes have been constructed on the north side of Route 58, and the contractor will be shifting westbound traffic west of Grove Avenue onto these new temporary lanes in early August. The contractor will then reconfigure the vacated westbound lanes to accommodate the eastbound traffic. This involves changing landmarkers, traffic signals, and installing barrier rail. With the tracker now shifted, this will allow the contractor to work more freely on the widening on the south side of Route 58, reducing the need for daily lane closures. To clarify, these lane closures will take place west of Grove Avenue. The flow of traffic east of Grove Avenue will remain in the same pattern. This is because this section of the project involved more extensive widening on the north side of Route 58 than the rest of the project. The work in this section east of Grove Avenue will continue until full completion. Again, a 35 mile an hour speed limit will be in effect through the entire corridor. It is very important we manage construction while maintaining the necessary access to the volume of traffic that moves through the corridor. We are working directly with the property owners to ensure access at all times to home that business. We ask that drivers obey the new 35 mile an hour speed limit and drive safely through the work zone. Please remember, our work crews have families too.
Awesome. All right. Suffolk Tourism is pleased to add an East Washington Street pop-up farmer's market, two until 5:00 PM on Tuesdays beginning August 9, 2022. This mini-market will be situated at the corner of East Washington Street and Tine Street. This is in addition to the midweek Wednesday's farmer's market under the Suffolk Visitor Center Pavilion that will continue operating from 3:30 PM to 6:30 PM through August 31st. And of course, the regular farmer's market continues every Saturday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM through November 19th. For more information, visit SuffolkVAFarmersMarket.com. Last night, the city of Suffolk joined hundreds of other cities across the nation to participate in National Night Out. The event started out on a high note with record attendance at the kickoff ceremony to include special guests. Did I go backwards?
No doubt.
Nope, did it right, okay. Special guest, Congresswoman Elaine Luria. And from there, seven tour buses and dozens of emergency response vehicles fanned out across the city to celebrate with our citizens. From downtown to Creekside, Chukatack to Pewsville, city staff and volunteers visited 20 locations across the city to spread the National Night Out cheer, and a great time was had by all. Stay tuned for more events and photos in the coming weeks, and for more information, visit www.sufficnno.com. Suffolk Public Library is winding down summer in a big way with the Summer Creator Fair. This color-filled event is a joyful celebration of art and creativity. Join us at the North Suffolk Library, Saturday, August 13th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Summer Creator Fair will feature the work of local artists and activities for participants of all ages and skill levels. Event activities include author panels, pendulum painting and psychedelic Sharpie art, storytime with Wendy Jones, acrylic painting workshops, and a sidewalk chalk art competition. For more information, visit SuffolkPublicLibraries.com. And a quick reminder that residents seeking a COVID-19 vaccine are encouraged to visit VaccinateVirginia.gov or contact the State Call Center to find out a vaccination location convenient to them. And lastly, on your screen are the various ways for residents and businesses to stay connected to the city of Suffolk. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moore. We'll now move on to announcement from City Council, and we're going to start with Councilman Goldberg. Been first all night.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hold on, let me get you turned on, or hit you. Go.
Thank you very much, Mayor. A couple of things I want to bring up. One is, we had a gentleman that talked about railroad stops in Suffolk, Mr. Apperson. I was fortunate enough to be able to work with him and talk with him about it. I think it's a great program, and again, I want to continue for staff to look into the possibility of a railroad stop. I think we talked about this last time, and I want to continue with that, so that we do have a report or something of that nature that will talk about a railroad stop. Second thing, again, I'm concerned on the, we're going into the hurricane season, we're kind of in the hurricane season. I want to know more about how we're going to handle it with Public Works. I want the public to know how advanced we are and how we are prepared to take care of those issues that come up. Thirdly, last night, National Night Out was absolutely a blast. I had a great time with it, saw a lot of people, got out. It was wonderful to see so many people out, taking part in a program that has been started here many years ago. We've been very successful. Matter of fact, we've won awards nationally for that, and the staff did a fantastic job, Mr. City Manager and Mayor. It was a great job done, and I think it was a very safe evening. It was a lot of fun, and I certainly enjoyed it, and I appreciated everything. Thank you very much.
Councilman Ward?
Yes. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city manager for allowing, being notified, Elaine Luria, 1 to 10, the National Night Out. I think that was a very good blast, that she enjoyed it very well, and it was a big plus for our city. I just want to say this here, some things that I've been noticing. National Night Out is something that we should cherish, because I was looking at the news last night, and I got a little upset that they talked about the other cities. And I flipped channels, because they, one channel said one city had 200, one city had it in a park, and one city just had something about the guns. So I flipped another channel, and they ain't said nothing about Suffolk. I said, wow. And I was like, you know what? We take it for granted. And then I said, this is something that we should be very proud of, and not only proud of, it shows you how Suffolk is. And what I'm saying to you is that, like you said, I went through certain communities, and one of the communities that I, up in northern Suffolk, I had shared with one of the people of Huntersville, because I didn't see the sign there, they didn't have National Night Out. Night Out. And I know that, you know, it's something that's volunteer, but I was so happy and delighted that the community of Huntersville really put it on with a last minute, but that was great. The community of Pewsville put it on. It was, it's one of the sites that Congresswoman Luria went there, and she enjoyed that. But then I happened to go to Creekside, and when I went to Creekside, something just hit me, because I'm looking at all these people with all the games they had, and it's the first time I've been to Creekside, but Creekside almost gave me an idea how Suffolk was. And during this time we're in now, it's like you ask the question, can we all get along? And when you seen all that, we had great weather, but you seen all them people having a good time, all them volunteers, all them people doing the games, all the kids doing the game, you sit back and say, wow, Suffolk is a great place. And we looked at it, we take it for granted, that some of the things that happened, even some of the issues that come forward, but just to look at National Night Out, that's a treasure. And I'm so glad that whoever decided to do that is grateful for our city, because our city, it brings all of us together. Like it or not, you go to the communities, and every community you go to, they have volunteers, that's their own food, that's their own, it's most of their own games. So I really took a heave, because most of the time from running, I don't have the time, but by me not running this time, I really, and I like, I heard some of the councils in the back were sharing, they went to different areas, and everybody seemed to enjoy themselves that night. They actually put everything else aside and said, I'm proud to be living in the City of Suffolk. So I'm just saying, thank you, because it made my night, and also made me feel how I think the city should be and where we can be. And Ms. Moore, I'd like to thank you for helping me out with a couple of things, and I think that you came on and took the task and did a great job for the first time. Thank you so much. And like I say, I thank everybody in the City of Suffolk who was a part of National Night Out. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Councilperson Barbara Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say a word about National Night Out also. Many congratulations to the Greater Oakland Chukka Tuck Civic League for putting on a great event. We had great attendance, we had a big group of folks, great to see a crowd after a lot of years of not having a crowd, and a good chance to meet your neighbors and just visit with folks, and we haven't had an opportunity to do that in a while. I had somebody approach me last night, introduce himself, and ask me, what was my favorite part about being on City Council? And I said, honestly, opportunities like this where we can be in the community and talk to the folks and the citizens of Suffolk. So, good night out, enjoyed by all, and just appreciate all the efforts that went into it. Again, congratulations to the Civic League for a job well done. I wanted to say thank you to Chief Baraki and Chief Chandler for the update tonight. I appreciate knowing what you all are doing, and we just, what you all do for our communities goes not unappreciated, but we don't always know exactly what all you're doing, and we appreciate it. Just wanted to thank you for that update. I also wanted to say thank you to everyone that came to speak tonight, for all the folks that are emailing and calling and texting and stopping by. I appreciate your input. We're listening. It's interesting to hear everyone's perspective, and I just, I just want you to know that you're heard and that we are paying attention, so thank you for taking the time to share your thoughts with us. Last but not least, I neglected to wish my father-in-law, Joseph Barlow Sr., a happy 94th birthday. That was on the 21st, and just want to fix that and say happy birthday to him, and also to his wife Lynn, who will be celebrating a birthday on Saturday, I won't say how many. But just wanted to give them a little bit of a shout out, and appreciate you indulging me on that. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Council. Councilman Johnson.
And I'm going to have to harp on the National Night Out too for just one minute, because it really is a remarkable event that only this city does like we do it. But not only is it wonderful for the people of this city, but for our staff, for our police department, for our sheriff's department, for our Commonwealth's attorney, for the fire department, for everyone in the city, for that young lady back there that led the charge. We have a remarkable crew, and we have a remarkable city. And despite the fact that communities put it together, I don't think it would happen if it wasn't for our city manager and all of these people that worked through all of this. So I say thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart, for the city and for the community, because it is a wonderful thing. The other thing I'd like to say, I'd like to thank these people for coming out. So many of you are from my borough. This happens to affect our borough more than anybody else, because we're living in it. But I want you to know, and so often, and the emails and the phone calls and the this and the, oh my gosh, it just goes on and on. And I'm thrilled, because this is what government is about. I mean, truly, well, we have, we have these people come to us and tell us what they want to do in our city, and the way we have it set up is such that we really don't have a lot of control until it actually comes before us. Now it comes to us, and we have to make the decision whether it's the right thing for our city or not. And there's lots of things to look at. But part of that is listening to the people that live in this city and hearing what you want your city to look like. Right now, we're going through the 2045 plan to figure out what our city, we want it to look like, and this is going to be a big part of it. This is a decision we all have to be a part of, because this is part of where we're heading as a city. So I can't thank you enough. I've got more information tonight than I've gotten thus far, and I'm sure we'll have more information if you go out tomorrow night, and at the next meeting, we'll have even more information. So we are listening. Never think decisions are made without public input, because they're not. We listen and we hear what you have to say, and this is your city that we represent for you. So thank you for being here.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you. I'd like to start out as well, speaking of National Night Out, I think it was a great turnout at every place that I attended, and we had a lot of exciting things that was taking place, and the kids were all excited, and that's where I got the joy from, seeing the kids really enjoying the night out and all the different things that they had to share with others. So that was great. That day was in the community, meeting some of the neighbors that they had not seen before, and that was good to be able to mingle and meet new people. Also, I would just like to say to all of you that came out tonight, I think your voice is being heard, and whenever we have a meeting and a public hearing, that's the time that you are supposed to let your voice be heard, and decisions are made after the public hearing has held, not before the public hearing is held. At least I can say for myself, that that's the way that I've always presented myself is that when projects come before the council, I look at it, I listen to it, I listen to staff, then I listen to the public, and then I have to make a decision. But I can't make a decision until I have to hear both sides of what is taking place. Then I have to make a decision what is best for the people of Suffolk, not just Disciples Borough, because when I sit here, I represent more than just Disciples Borough. I'm elected by Disciples Borough, but overall, all of the people in Suffolk will have an effect to whatever this council decision we make. So we can't look at one project, regardless of which borough that it's in, and make a decision just because it's in my borough or it's not in my borough. It should be where it is what's best for the citizens. So I just wanted to share that a little bit with you. I'm happy to see you come out. I'm sure we will see you again. So that's your privilege, and that's your welcome to come. That's what the council chambers have set up for, come and let your voice be heard. So I just want to say again, thank you all for coming and sharing your information and concerns. I would also like to say, Mr. Manager, to you and Kevin on the market on Tine Street and East Washington Street, I want to thank you. I think it's a great thing that we are bringing down to the neighborhood, the people that can walk up and get vegetables and different things that they really need, that don't have transportation, and I am excited that we are bringing that to that end of the city to serve those people that are on East Washington Street. So again, I can't thank you enough for that. I think it's a great tool, and I'm hoping that the people will, I'm going to advertise it, I'm going to help you advertise it, I'm going to get out there and do some work to make sure people understand. The purpose of it being there is to try to have them to have a place that they can go and get healthy food and things they need for their families. So I want to say thank you again for that. Also, I'd like to thank Public Works. We have been talking, and I've asked you about some concerns we had out in the Hosea Road area as far as the ditches and the highway, and we know, you've told me that with the bridge out, we have a lot of trucks and stuff coming through there, and that will be taken care after the road is opened back up, where we can do more to upgrade some of those areas that need some work. But they are out there doing that, and I want to thank you very much for taking care of the ditches and the limb cutback and the growth in that area. We have a gun buyback at the Baum Church. I don't know how many guns was collected, just one, okay? Wasn't a big.
Four?
Four. Six total.
Six.
Well, that's good, that's six out of the heads, maybe of someone. And I want to thank Bishop Hall at the Baum for opening the doors of his church up, wherein that he allowed you and the group to come there and give the people the opportunity to bring those guns that they didn't want, or some that hopefully that saved some lives, really, that's what I'm hoping. Mr. Manager, on Shoalless Hill Road, I want to look into, I got an email that Amazon has put a sign up directing traffic, truck traffic, to Shoalless Hill Road. That shouldn't be. We need to look at that and ask them if anything, make sure they put signs up there at the industrial park telling them to go 664 on Portsmouth Boulevard to 664. So I'd appreciate it, we'll take a look at that and see if we can get with Amazon with trying to do something with that. I would like to give my condolences to Ms. Maddener Rogers, retired teacher with a number of years here in Suffolk. She's one of the pillars of the city, and I want to give my condolences to she and her, well, to her family that has passed on, and to be, her funeral will be next week, next Tuesday, at Metropolitan Baptist Church. And also, we had a young man that used to work for the city, Mr. Luda, that passed on, and I want to say condolences to him. He lived over in South Suffolk on Lewis Avenue, and when I saw his obituary in the paper, it really shocked me, because he was a great worker here in the city, and I don't know whether he was retired or not, but I know I used to see him all the time here at the city. And with that, I would say good evening, and thank you all again for coming.
All righty, I'll try to, try to wrap it up and be brief, looking at the hour. I want to start off by first also thanking our speakers. Public hearings and the opportunity to speak give us an opportunity to listen, and more importantly, ascertain information or be able to obtain information that we didn't have before you spoke. That's the main reason. You know, we can take a survey and how many people don't like something, but what's most important is to point out specifically what your concerns are. That way, you know, I've got, just let you, this, just to let you know, this is my fourth, I had to get a bigger one today, this is my fourth 460 folder. All these are nothing but emails, the staff reports, planning commissions, and everything, any other information I can garner when we're putting a decision like this together, because this is a big decision. This isn't a matter of, you know, whether we're going to put a sidewalk here, what kind of plants we're going to do. This is a big decision that will have a long-term effect. It's a long-term project, requiring a long-term solution. So we can't do anything in the short term. So whatever needs to be considered, we need to have that information. We need to take it into consideration. It's easy when you're sitting up here to look at the short term, because we're not going to be around that long. But the decisions that you make today could have effects five, 10, 15, or 20 years down the road. So I very, very much appreciate the comments, suggestions. Decisions that we make are normally, you use two body parts to make those decisions. One's your head, and the other one's your heart. Lots of times, emotion, you know, it affects people differently. Whatever the decisions are, I mean, I try to look at them without the emotion, because it affects different people one day than it does the next day, or different parts of the city, and like I said, our decisions lots of times have ramifications for everyone, some more so than others. So I just want everybody to know that, and I think anybody knows me, knows me this, you know, I tell people, you can question my judgment, you can question my ultimate decisions, but I'll never give you pause to question my motives. The motives are always the same, to do the best we can for our citizens, our citizens all the time. So this is absolutely a work in progress. I do plan on attending the meeting tomorrow and any other things I get. And I've got, along with that right there, I've got four pages of notes from tonight. And of those four pages of notes, there's eight issues that I got to get some answers for right off the top, because I didn't think about it, and think everything. So based on some of the information that was supplied to me, gives you something else to look at, and I'm confident that everybody up here in this diocese is going to look at it the same way. So enough of that. The AAA bond ratings, we got those again today, and along with that, just a couple days ago, I actually printed them all out. We're in really, really good shape. I enjoyed doing that. It was four and a half hours, an hour and a half with each bond rating agency to go over a presentation. And I wasn't trying to get a little cocky or anything, but I basically told them, you know, if you liked this last year, you should love us this year. You know, I don't have, you know, I'm a salesman by nature, I guess, but the only thing to sell here is read it, you can figure it out yourself. And so we've done a lot of things right, and because we've done a lot of things right, it gives us the latitude to do more for our citizens. We're not spending money on interest, we're spending money on infrastructure, we're spending money on quality of life improvements. So it is important, it doesn't seem like it. And then also, the fourth quarter revenue numbers came in, which we based our budget on, we actually passed a budget before we knew how much money we got, but we take a pretty good shot, you know, because the budget's done before you get these numbers which come in around the first of July, and the numbers are impressive. Now, whether it stays like that, I don't know, because we don't know where the economy's going. I mean, it really surprised us during COVID that we did as well as we did. You know, we were conservative, cut back on our budget a couple of years ago, and low and behold, you know, we cut back on this $2 million on meals tax, and low and behold, we're right there. So, you know, we do the best we can there. Also, National Night Out, and I'm not going to belabor this, because I have said it till my wife calls it ad nauseam, she said that's ad nauseam, that's where that came from. Don't say it anymore. It is absolutely my favorite day, my favorite evening in this city, for all the reasons that everyone on this diocese mentioned. You know, we have a lot of resources and a lot of assets in our city. I mean, we are truly blessed. We got 430 square miles, and I told somebody the other day, it doesn't make any difference, you know, when you say, you know, Baltimore, well, you know you're going to live here, you're going to live there. It doesn't make any difference what you're looking for. If you want to be out in a rural community, we got it. If you want to be a little closer, live in a nice apartment in a mixed-use development, walk out, walk out down. walk out, walk out downstairs and go to a shop, you can do it. If you like downtown atmosphere, you can do it. We've got a lot. But what National Night Out does is it spotlights our number one asset. Our number one asset is our citizens. It really is. I don't care what you say. I mean, obviously I watch a little bit of the news and you look at other localities, you look at the demographics, you look at the diversity and you look at where we are. And I say we because it, it is us, it's all of us. And, uh, I mean, it's really pretty amazing. And we tend to do that. And everybody on this diocese, I can tell you that they listen. You don't think they listen and it really gripes me when we talk about lack of transparency. We don't put things out there, we don't listen to people. I don't know how to be any more transparent. Somebody write me a letter and tell me what we have to do to be more transparent. We have a process. We follow that, that process. I am a process person. If we're supposed to announce this, if we're supposed to do that, you get it posted, you put it on Facebook. You do everything you can possibly do. And if there's some suggestions out there to make us more transparent, I want to know what they are because I guarantee you, they will be implemented. But sometimes people aren't familiar with the process so things kind of pop up on you. And that reminds me, Councilman Johnson brought this up at the last meeting, it was a very good suggestion. And I have spoken to the city manager, it's like, you know, we don't really know anything. You know, up here on this diocese, people ask me, well, how about this? I don't know. What do you mean you don't know? You're supposed to know, you're the mayor, you know everything. No, we don't. What's being built there? What's, we're not aware of what's going to the planning commission till it hits the planning commission. So I have suggested to the city manager in the future that any rezoning applications, once those applications are received, that everyone on council be notified of it. Okay? And if we do that, you know, we don't, we don't want to get involved in the process because a lot of the applications, I mean, they don't need us. I mean, they're no brainers. But at the same time, every one of them should cross our desk. And if we look at it and it gives us pause, then we'll have the opportunity to start looking into it before it gets as far as it does, which is normally to the planning commission. That's when I hear something, when it gets to the planning commission. And what I do is I look at every single vote. When we get our package, I'll look at the vote on planning commission. Of course, if, if it's something that's controversial, we'll know about it. But normally what I'll do is I'll wait for the planning commission report to come. And anytime I see a vote that's not a unanimous vote, I go back and watch the whole thing. Why did one person vote against it? Why did three people vote against it? Were there any speakers there? Because whatever comes to the planning commission is gonna come to us. So I think with that additional little process in place, that'll give us a little bit more warning. And if it's something we feel like we need to delve into, uh, at that time, then we'll be able to do that. So once again, any transparency issues, give me a call, let me know how you think we can help. But I'm pretty sure we're dotting the i's, we're crossing the t's, we're putting it out there. I mean, I do a Facebook Live every two weeks. I mean, I haven't, I missed one. I missed one because the internet was down. But other than that, it's either Friday, either Friday morning or Monday afternoon, for as long as people want me to talk, I'll start at normally 5:30 on, every other Friday, every other Monday, it's the Monday before the council meeting. The reason it's the Monday before the council meeting is I will go over our agenda. This is what's on the work session. This is what's on our agenda at regular session. You got a question about something? You know, let me know. I'll, if I know the answer, I'll give it to you and if I don't, I'll get it for you. I've used this quote lately, you know, you can, if you want to help someone, tell them what they need to know. Tell them what they need to hear. I know I'm messing up. If you want to help someone, tell them what they need to hear. If you want to help yourself, tell them what they want to hear. Now think about that. Too much, we're inclined to tell people what they want to hear. I will never tell you what you want to hear. I'm gonna tell you what you need to hear. You may not like me for it, but that's what you need to know. And in the long run, it usually works out the best. So with that, um, I got a little short quote of the night and that is, we talk about tough decisions. There's never a good time for tough decisions. You have to pick courage and do it. Governance is about making tough, even unpopular decisions. And that was from Jerem Ramish. I don't know who he is. Sounds like an Indian guy. In what that being said, uh, wish everybody a good night and we had, need a motion to adjourn. Motion for Councilman Barlow to adjourn. You have been first again, and Councilman Ward? Second, for Councilman Ward. Anyone want to hang around a little longer? No? Any of y'all want to hang around longer? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Labarlow. Councilmember Goldberg. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward. Vice Mayor Bennett. Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of six to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.